Buenas tardes, a todos. Disculpas por el retraso. La junta empezará aproximadamente a las 7:15. Si pudieran, por online, la reunión comenzará aproximadamente a las 7:15. Gracias.
Es un dividido y confuso.
La junta empezará en un momento. La reunión regular de 26 de septiembre de la Junta de la Escuela de Fairfax County se llevará a cabo ahora. Por favor, sean los padres de la alianza, seguido de un momento de silencio y una presentación del Ancho de la Nación por la Corral de la Chantilly High School, bajo la dirección de Evan Ayers.
Yo pido alianza...
...a los Estados Unidos de América, en el sistema de la cultura pública, una nación bajo Dios, inimitable, con libertad y justicia para todos.
¿Podemos escuchar otro aplauso por esos estudiantes talentosos? Agenda, item 2.02, anuncios. Miss Lady ha presentado una solicitud escrita para asistir a esta reunión de esta noche, virtualmente debido a un conflicto personal, ya que está asistiendo a una conferencia en Los Ángeles, California. Todos aquellos que están de favor de aprobar la solicitud de Miss Lady, Miss Marin, Miss Dixitt, Sr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Sr. McDaniel, Miss Anderson, Miss Seismarheiser, Sr. Dunn, Sr. Moon, Miss St. John Cunningham, y yo, es unanimo. Miss Lady, ¿podrás probar tu micrófono?
Probar.
Está bien, podemos escucharlo muy claro. Gracias. Si ustedes quieren revisar una copia de la agenda, por favor, vea el fondo de la auditoria. Para obtener copias de los temas presentados esta noche, por favor, reference el código QR en la agenda o en el sitio web fcp.edu/schoolboard/boarddocs. Esta reunión será transmitida en la canla 99 y livestreamada en el sitio web fcp.edu/tv/ch99. Agenda, item 2.03, Mesmo de Herencia Hispana. Llamo a Dr. Anderson para una proclamación.
Gracias. Mientras que el Mesmo de Herencia Hispana nacional es reconocido anualmente desde el 15 de septiembre hasta el 15 de octubre en los Estados Unidos, celebrando las historias, culturas y innumerables contribuciones de aquellos cuyos ancestros trazaron sus raíces a España, México, Centroamérica, Sudamérica y las naciones caribeñas hablando de español. Y mientras que el 15 de septiembre es un día históricamente significativo, marcando la independencia de los países latinos estadounidenses Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras y Nicaragua, el período designado también honra a México y Chile, que celebran su independencia en septiembre 16 y 18, respectivamente. Y el Día de los Pueblos Indígenas, o Dia de la Raza, reconocido en medio de octubre, cae dentro de estos 30 días. Y mientras que la historia hispana es inexplicablemente entrelazada con la historia de Estados Unidos, como California, Florida, Texas, Nuevo México, Nevada, Arizona, Utah, Colorado y partes de Wyoming y Kansas y Oklahoma fueron en un momento territorio español o mexicano. Como parte del grupo más amplio de pueblos étnicos de Estados Unidos, los hispanos y latinos han contribuido significativamente a nuestra identidad y han jugado un papel vital en la formación de la democracia, economía, cocina y cultura. Y mientras que el tema de este año, Pioneros y Cambio: Formando el Futuro Juntos, celebra a los pasados y presentes histeriabanderos hispanos que impulsan el cambio positivo para un futuro más inclusivo. Activistas, incluidos Silvia Mendez, quien jugó un papel clave en el caso de Brown vs. Board of Education, y Dolores Herta, activista de trabajo y derechos civiles. Servantes públicos, incluidos el Justo Supremo de la Corte de Justicia Sonia Sotomayor y la primera médica general femenina, Antonia Novello. Artístas, incluidos Celia Cruz, la primera afrolatina que cantó en televisión y tuvo su herencia en cuarto, y Bad Bunny, rey de trap rap, rapera, cantante y productor de música de idiomas no ingleses, y la primera músico de habla no inglesa en convertirse en artista con más transmisiones en vivo de Spotify del año. Autoras como Sandra Cisneros, autora de "The House on Mango Street", y Oscar Huelos, ganador del Premio Pulitzer. Y considerando que los destacados hispanos de Virginia incluyen a Michelle Zajur, fundadora de la Comisión de Comercio de Virginia, Susana Marino, empresaria, presidente, fundadora y presidenta de la Comisión de Comercio de Comercio de Virginia del Norte, y defensor de la pelota del balcón de la Major League Baseball Javier López, quien asistió a la escuela secundaria Robinson. Y mientras que casi uno de cada cinco personas en los Estados Unidos es hispana latina, la concentración más alta de la población hispana latina de Virginia reside en el norte de Virginia y representa el 16.5% de la población de Fairfax County. Uno de cada cuatro estudiantes de FCPS es de herencia latina/hispana. Y mientras que FCPS tiene la fortuna de tener educadores y personal que valoran y trabajan con nuestros estudiantes hispanos y latinos, nuestros empleados los empoderan para que se conviertan en la generación de líderes, reforzando la filosofía de la junta escolar de que la diversidad es una fortaleza que crea ciudadanos globales resilientes, abiertos e innovadores. Ahora, por lo tanto, se resuelve que la Junta de la Escuela de Fairfax, aquí, proclama el mes de la herencia hispana de septiembre a octubre de 2024 como Mesmo de Herencia Hispana. Encouramos a los residentes de Fairfax County a participar en programas y eventos que se llevan a cabo en nuestras escuelas y comunidad, para aprender, celebrar y elevar la rica herencia latina/hispana.
Gracias, Dr. Anderson. Llamo a Miss St. John Cunningham para proporcionar la proclamación en español.
Muchas gracias, y bienvenidos al programa Family Lit, que se reúne aquí por viernes. Mes de la Herencia Hispana, declaración. Considerando que el Mes Nacional de la Herencia Hispana se reconoce anualmente desde el 15 de septiembre hasta el 15 de octubre en los Estados Unidos, celebrando las historias, culturas y innumerables contribuciones de aquellos cuyos antepasados tienen sus raíces en España, México, América Central, América del Sur y las naciones del Caribe de habla hispana. Y considerando que el 15 de septiembre es un día históricamente significativo que marca la independencia de cinco países latinoamericanos: Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras y Nicaragua. El periodo señalando también rinde homaje a México y Chile, que celebran su independencia el 16 de septiembre y el 18 de septiembre, respectivamente. Y el Día de los Pueblos Indígenas o Dia de la Raza, comemorado a mediados de octubre, se celebra dentro de estos 30 días. Y considerando que la historia hispana está inexorablemente entrelazada con la historia de los Estados Unidos, ya que California, Florida, Texas, Nuevo México, Nevada, Arizona, Utah, Colorado, partes de Wyoming, Kansas y Oklahoma fueron en un momento dado territorio español o mexicano. Como parte del grupo étnico más grande en los Estados Unidos, los hispanos y latinos han contribuido significativamente a la identidad de nuestra neación y han jugado un papel vital en la formación de la democracia, economía, cocina y cultura estadounidense. Y considerando que el tema de este año, Pioneros del Cambio: Formando el Futuro Juntos, celebra a los pioneros hispanos de ayer y hoy que impulsan un cambio positivo para un futuro más inclusivo. Activistas como Silvia Mendez, quien jugó un papel clave en el histórico caso Brown vs. la Junta de Educación, y Dolores Herta, activista laboral y de derechos civiles. Funcionarios públicos como la jueza de la Corte Suprema Sonia Sotomayor y la primera mujer general antonía Novello. Artístas como Celia Cruz, la primera afrolatina en cantar en la televisión y tener su retrato en una moneda de 25 centavos. Y Bad Bunny, el rey del trap latino, rapero, cantante y productor discográfico y primer músico de habla no inglesa en convertirse en el artista con más transmisiones en vivo de Spotify del año. Autoras como Sandra Cisneros, galordana autora de "The House on Mango Street", y Oscar Huelos, ganador del premio Pulitzer. Y considerando que destacados hispanos de Virginia incluyen a Michelle Zajur, fundadora de la cámara de comercio hispana de Virginia, Susana Marino, empresaria, presidente, fundadora y presidente de la cámara de comercio hispanoamérica de Virginia del Norte, y el lanzador de béisbol de las grandes ligas Javier López, quien asistió a la escuela secundaria Robinson. Y considerando que casi uno de cada cinco personas en los Estados Unidos es hispana latina, la concentración más alta de la población hispana latina de Virginia reside en el norte de Virginia y representa el 16.5% de la población del condado de Fairfax. Uno de cada cuarto de estudiantes de FCPS es de descendencia hispana latina. Y considerando que FCPS tiene la gran fortuna de tener educadores y personal que valoran y trabajan con nuestros estudiantes hispanos y latinos. Nuestros empleados los empoderan para que se conviertan en la generación de líderes, reforzando la filosofía de la junta escolar de que la diversidad es una fortaleza que forma ciudadanos globales, resilientes, receptivos y innovadores. Animamos a los residentes del condado de Fairfax a participar en programas y eventos que se llevan a cabo en nuestras escuelas y comunidad para que celebren, enaltezcasen, y aprendan sobre la rica herencia hispana latina.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Seismore Heiser. I’ll call for a vote. All those in favor? Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismore Heiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, and myself. That is unanimous. Congratulations. The proclamation passes. I would like to welcome all those who are here to support this proclamation, the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, to please join the board for a photo at the front of the dais. Agenda item three point zero one, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. We welcome all community members who are here and those who signed up to speak this evening. Additional information about signing up to provide comments at school board regular business meetings and public hearings can be found on the school board website. During the sign-up process, community members acknowledge they were informed of the school board’s expectations for proper decorum when providing comments. These expectations are also available online and with the printed agenda and meeting materials at the back of the room. We ask audience members to be respectful of one another. Shouting and outbursts will not be tolerated. Please hold your applause until the conclusion of a speaker’s remarks. Audience members may not join speakers at the podium and should remain at their seats, including when recording or taking photos. We’re grateful for those who have come to speak to us today, and thank you for your cooperation. School board members will be listening but not responding. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Malik Buragu. Kena McAvoy.
Good evening. My name is Kena McAvoy, and I’m a local advocate for phone-free schools. The Virginia Department of Education Guidance for Cell Phone-Free Education was released last week and includes a school day that is completely smartphone-free in classrooms, hallways, and cafeterias. Please revise current FCPS policies to reflect VDOE guidance and implement a bell-to-bell smartphone-free school day for all grade levels. We are facing a collective action problem with our children. A bell-to-bell phone-free school day is a powerful and intuitive way for us to collectively act. The entire school day is an instructional period. Digital wellness, education, and leadership are critical pieces to this evolution to a fully phone-free school day. It is a cruel optimism to imply that parents can handle this crisis in their homes when provided with a webinar or a list of parental controls they should master. The current FCPS Digital Citizenship Program is sourced from Common Sense Media, an organization which counts Jeff Bezos and Bill Gates as founding partners. An FCPS digital wellness department should be informed by partners that are not allies of the technology industry. A continuing conversation about digital wellness is essential and demands more than a yearly lesson on digital citizenship. One of the most important jobs of an adolescent is to develop the ability to choose what they will pay attention to. A smartphone tragically removes that challenge during the most consequential time of their lives. When my children were in high school, we didn’t have the capacity or information to demand a smartphone-free school day. But we do now. We have the Virginia Department of Education, the Phone-Free Schools Movement, Jonathan Haidt and the Anxious Generation, the U.S. Surgeon General, and scores of advocacy groups. Please partner with families and advocates to do the hard thing and return our school buildings to places where laughter and conversation are heard in the hallways and heads are held high and not buried in smartphones. Thank you.
Kathleen Gillette Mallard. Good evening. I’ve had so much time this evening. I got here early for a change, and so I’ve scribbled a lot of stuff, but I will be submitting my revised statement later. Good evening, school board. I speak to you this evening about your responsibilities to safeguard and protect FCPS students, ensuring not only students’ academic engagement and success, but also their environmental and physical safety, including their intellectual, mental, moral, and ethical health and well-being. That’s a lot of responsibility, and I know parents and citizens alike greatly appreciate the efforts that you all have been making to provide not only safe schools but great personnel, admin, cafeteria staff, et cetera. In past statements, I’ve focused on your resolution declaring January twenty-second Human Awareness Trafficking Month. Other concerns include drug and gang activity. Tonight, however, I will focus on U.S. federal child pornography laws and what appear to be violations of this law by FCPS, specifically obscene materials available to minors that impact on their well-being of students. Section one four six six A of Title eighteen, I will be including this information, makes it illegal for any person to knowingly produce, distribute, receive, or possess, transfer, or distribute visual representations such as drawings, cartoons, or paintings that appear to depict minors engaged in sexually explicit conduct. There are a couple of books that you all have said are appropriate. Oh, I thought it would cut off. Gender Queer Lawn Boy, for example. Now, our superintendent took his oath of office on some of these books. I don’t understand that. These books violate federal law for obscenity, and I really hope you all reconsider. It’s not banning books. We are not, as, people are not asking to ban books. De-select them. Okay.
Harry Jackson.
I stand before you today to address serious and urgent issue. The longstanding pattern of violence and harassment against Black high school football players over the past twenty years. Incidents like the Jenna Six in Louisiana in two thousand and six and more recent cases in Massachusetts and Pennsylvania have shown how young Black athletes are disproportionately targeted and harassed. These incidents often escalate into larger acts of racial violence. Now, at Hayfield Secondary School, we find ourselves at similar crossroads. Parents have reported, and FCPS has confirmed, the stalking and harassment of Hayfield football players, many of whom are Black. Their home addresses have been leaked. They have been followed. Their safety is in jeopardy. Yet, instead of taking proper action, like conducting a violence-threat risk assessment, FCPS has chosen to mute the voice that could expose these truths. Coach Darryl Overton, a mentor and leader of these young athletes, has been silenced, sidelined, and targeted for removal. This is not just negligence. It’s a clear effort to suppress the truth. At the same time, Black parents and students are being harassed and surveilled while their white counterparts are spared this intrusion. This selective enforcement reflects blatant racial discrimination. FCPS is protecting white privilege while undermining Black success. I know these tactics quite well, as I lived through them as a youth football player in New Jersey, where I was stalked, threatened with weapons, and harassed by white vigilantes. Tactics rooted in fear, hate, and a desire to maintain racial purity in certain spaces. What’s happening at Hayfield echoes those same injustices, and I refuse to stand by in silence. As Dr. King once said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We cannot allow this to happen, not in two thousand and fourteen, not in Fairfax County. Hayfield by forty.
Malik Buragu.
Hello, everybody. I came here to voice my opinion on, like, AAP and grading as a parent of, like, two children in Fairfax County. So I recently came to know, in fact, only like two weeks back, how the loopholes, every system has loopholes, and FCPS looks like they have a lot of loopholes in getting, first point is AAP. So how they got into AAP programs, majority of the students. First point is, I can clearly see my son, who is very superior to a lot of people I know. Everybody went to AAP except my son. And I came to know, like, one of the reasons is, I don’t want to name anyone here, due to some of the coaching programs and tutusions, which I absolutely like, I feel it’s not only for my son. Even if you take, in general, aspect for unprivileged students, there’s no choice. They cannot pay like six thousand dollars per year. This is totally, like, unjustifiable. My son says, “Dad, I am dumb student. I cannot make into AAP.” He tried very hard, but he thinks he is dumb. But really speaking, after doing research, in fact, loopholes made my student dumb, my kid. In fact, it’s very, very good. I went to one coaching center just to see, analyze their opinion. They think he’s very, very bright. They think like he is brighter than many of their students who got AAP. I feel this is not fair, and I think you are doing very good steps last year by banning some of these institutions. I came here to strongly recommend you please continue, like, some constructive process so that only gifted students will get into AAP programs, not everyone who goes to, like, coaching centers, tutusions by paying a lot of money. And second thing is, for grading also, like, I think I have like only four seconds, but anyway, like, I please, I just came to here strongly to support that.
Chair Frisch, that is our last public speaker.
Thank you. Agenda item four point zero one, Student Representative Matters. I call Ms. Sawant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone, and happy fall. As the proclamation mentioned earlier, as we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, we honor the contributions of Hispanic Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. With the rich diversity of our community here in Fairfax County, we recognize how the influence of Hispanic heritage continues to shape our local schools, culture, and future. And I really enjoyed the proclamation earlier today. Along with that, speaking of celebrations, I wanted to congratulate the one hundred and ninety-one FCPS students in the class of two thousand and twenty-five, who are National Merit Semley finalists. And I think this is just a true testament to the incredible talent that we have here in Fairfax County. Last Friday, I had the pleasure of attending and speaking at the kickoff for the Portrait of a Graduate Innovator Cohort three point oh. This cohort is for a dedicated group of teachers and administrators across elementary, middle, and high school who work to embed Portrait of a Graduate presentations of learning practices with others who are at similar points of readiness. The goal of this program is to develop lessons and strategies to improve practices that lead to successful POG poll implementation for all students while learning from each other throughout the year. I was just so inspired by the ideas that the teachers brought to the table and just the good energy in the room. I love that. I started at Navy Elementary in the Portrait of a Graduate Pilot Program back in two thousand and thirteen, and just seeing how big it’s grown since then and how many teachers are involved in the program, I’m looking forward to how it’ll continue in the future. But as I spoke to teachers about this program, my experience is just one of many. In the last decade that Portrait of a Graduate has been implemented, we’ve experienced rapid change, from the pandemic, learning how to shift to virtual learning, and the rates that we had in chronic absenteeism that went up. How have our skills and needs in FCPS changed over the last ten years? How have the questions that we ask to identify student learning changed? With these questions in mind, the Portrait of a Graduate Secondary Advisory Committee is open to students who are interested in working closely with the Portrait of a Graduate Instructional Services Team. I’ve had some interest from students who are in the Madison Leaders Program, and I’m optimistic about the growth and the feedback that students can share in this program this year. Students, please reach out if you’d like to get involved. On Monday, I also had the privilege of attending the Fairfax Global Leaders Kickoff, hosted by Mr. McElveen. I’m looking forward to the amazing things that we have planned this year in partnership with the Seventeen Rooms Project and the Global Classroom Project on closing the gap between what we teach in history and how students apply that in the real world. This initiative perfectly aligns with our strategic plan and provides fellows, seniors, with opportunities to engage with global leaders and advance their general understanding of international affairs and global issues. And I’m so excited to be part of this amazing initiative along with one hundred and thirty-four accepted fellows. I was also able to have a productive meeting with the superintendent on Monday as well, thank you, Dr. Reed, about how students can work with the accreditation policy that’s been passed down by Virginia this year and issues important for Student Voice to advocate this year. I brought these issues and ideas to the first superintendent’s advisory council meeting made of student representatives from all of the FCPS schools of the school year at Woodson High School. As Dr. Reed mentioned in her Academic Matters last time, the changes currently proposed don’t support FCPS learners, such as having students graduate in four years, even if they’re approved for extra time, or multilingual learners having three semesters to learn their second language before they have to report it and before it goes onwards. The idea that schools will be penalized for something that students need genuine help with isn’t on the right page with our strategic plan. I wanted to bring your attention to the new student perspectives and questions that I got from the superintendent’s advisory council meeting and the students who spoke to me about it. They’re eager to learn more about the reasoning and the intention behind the state’s decision and how that kind of factor down to the county level and how that affects us here. Accountability is important, but we want to focus on a more accurate representation of FCPS success. This year in the superintendent’s advisory council, students have been talking about creating a committee or a focus group that will work this year to ask students what do they find is important to their index of success and their performance in Fairfax County and how we might be able to create a parallel structure to measure student performance. One key takeaway that I wanted to share with you from our meeting is how students are reacting to this accreditation policy and how important it is to share with students how this policy will affect them and how they can get involved with advocating. And I actually do have a few students who are interested in writing blogs and sharing things in Fairfax County to get involved with this mission. Over the coming weeks, I hope to share more resources through the social media and through the superintendent’s advisory council to educate students and families on how this policy will affect us here in Fairfax County and how we can be better prepared. And I just wanted to express my thanks to Ms. Maron for really helping us in this mission to learn how students can advocate for themselves. And I think it’s just a perfect example of how we can be active participants in this county. Another significant issue raised during the council meeting was equitable access to after-school activities, particularly regarding transportation. One student from Annandale mentioned that their school went from having two days of late buses to just one, while another school still has two days of late buses. As we went around the room, it became clear that the number of late bus days varies widely across the county. Some students said they had four, others said they had three, others said they had one. It wasn’t the same across all of the different schools. A student from Centerville High School shared how the... A student from Centerville High School shared how the reduction in late bus days has forced clubs to meet at the same time, times that students can come to those meetings, which makes it difficult for students who now have to choose to participate between multiple activities that may happen at the same time. So even if students can stay after school, they now have to choose between the clubs due to the limited transportation options. Overall, the question that the students was asking was, why is the number of late bus days that each school has different? What determines how many late bus days a school gets, and what makes up for the difference between the amount of late buses that schools are getting? Students are concerned, want to learn more about how these decisions are being made and how they can get involved with it. I know this was a lot of information, but I just want to thank you for paying attention to these important concerns of the students. Supporting student leaders and giving them the tools to engage civically with the decisions that affect our schools is critical. I hope we can continue working together to find solutions throughout this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sawant. Agenda item 5.01, Action Item: Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on September 26, 2024, to the best of each Board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Mr. McElveen, do I have a second? Dr. Anderson? All those in favor? Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham? And my, Ms. Lady can't vote on this, I don't think. Or can she? All right, Ms. Lady and myself, that is unanimous. Agenda item 5.02, Action Item: Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting, I call on Ms. St. John Cunningham for a motion.
I move to expel the student who committed a serious offense in violation of the school board policy by being convicted of one count of felony murder noncapital in the community.
Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Maron. All those in favor? Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, Ms., Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself? All those opposed? Abstentions? Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Lady, Ms. Seismarheiser, and Ms. Dixitt, who were not present? All right, and there was no opposition, the motion passes. I call on Ms. Seismarheiser for a motion.
I move that the Board authorizes the Chair to send the letters and to prepare related documents as discussed in closed session.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. McDaniel, all those in favor? Ms. Maron, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Lady, and myself, opposed? Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, and Mr. Moon. Abstentions? Ms. Dixitt, abstention? Ms. Dixitt. Will the clerk read the vote?
Eight, three, one, the motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item 5.03, Action Item: Legislative Program, I call on Dr. Anderson for a motion.
I move that the School Board adopt the 2025 Fairfax County School Board State and Federal Legislative Program.
Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Maron. Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, the legislative program is our Board's message to lawmakers on Capitol Hill and to lawmakers in the General Assembly to speak about what we find to be important, what our priorities are as a Fairfax County community. It is the culmination of collaboration of the School Board members with very strong support by Mr. Malloy, so I do want to take this moment to say thank you to him and all of his work. He is our eyes and ears on the ground in Richmond when the General Assembly is in session. Thank you so much for your leadership in ushering us through this work. I want to highlight one, I want to highlight some of the legislative priorities. The program has many, many positions, and if I were to read them all to you tonight, we will still be here through tomorrow. But I do want to highlight on the federal side, some of the key components that we find to be of higher importance, that we will be engaging our delegation on in October, once this passes. One is the full funding of IDEA. If Fairfax County received its full share of IDEA funding, which is the 40% that was committed to in 1975, we would have received an additional $127 million this year, last year, I'm sorry. This is an important piece because we know how much it takes to educate all of our students, and we know the additional supports that are required for our special education students. And having that funding is really paramount. We have never been close to that amount, to that 40%. I think the closest has been 11% to 12%, and last year was roughly 9.5%. So we do call on our legislators to fully fund IDEA. We ask for meals reimbursement, federal meals reimbursement. We know that many of our families and many of our students rely very heavily on the meals that we serve at our schools, and having universal meals for all of our students will be a great protection to them. Some of the new components that I wanted to highlight of our legislative program is the cybersecurity and educational technology components. We do know cybersecurity has been a challenge for all school divisions and businesses and organizations over the past several years. I think in Fairfax County, we've also encountered a significant amount of challenges in that area in the past five years particularly. And to combat that, our division has had to commit significant supports, personnel, and dollars in order for us to address some of those challenges. And I think one of the things that I want to share, while we do have crime that happens around our schools and in our schools, we have not had to erect police stations in our division. So we are asking for federal support in order to provide some guidance and organization in this area because the millions of dollars that are being spent to counter these attacks can be spent on our students. And student safety, one of the things I must highlight is that we are asking for all of states to participate in the FBI's Next Generation Identification and Non-Criminal Justice Rap Back Service. This is an important component for the safety of our students. I know Ms. Maron is going to be speaking quite a bit about many of the state legislative positions, but a few that I will highlight is the local support, I'm sorry, the local control of our schools. We know what is best for our students. We understand our community, and decisions that are made about how to instruct, how to educate our student population should be local control. There should not be backdoor attempts from Richmond in order to usurp that authority. So that is part of some of our priorities. And also, we have many priorities regarding student academic success because that is our first job first and foremost. So I think that was the bell, and I will stop here.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Maron, would you like to speak to your second? Thank you.
Yes, I would very much like to speak to this. So we're committed to, full steam ahead to a strong legislative program, more than ever this year, and the timing couldn't be better because we know that when the laws get passed at the state, it impacts us right here and also federally, obviously. So last week, myself, Chairman Frisch, Dr. Anderson, we were in the Richmond area with the Virginia State School Boards Association for the legislative session to get ready for what's coming at us in January. We are hosting our Fairfax delegation on October 8th again to let them know how things are going with us and how we can partner with them. November is Take Your Legislature to School Month. January, we're going to do sessions, we'll be down in the General Assembly sessions and advocating. But you know, what's really key, there's two things, and our student representative already talked about one of them. So one is that J-LARC report, so that J-LARC is that term of the research arm of the General Assembly that found that there is chronic underfunding of our schools in Virginia. So we've been talking about get that money, but it's important, so some new things have happened, and this is why this federal agenda is so important, excuse me, the legislative agenda is so important because it serves as this document that's going to guide us even as new information comes about. So the Subcommittee of the J-LARC, for the J-LARC study met last week in the General Assembly, and we learned all sorts of more things. So it's important to note, there is no surplus of funds in Virginia. There is a need for more state revenue. Any talks of a tax cut is wildly out of touch with reality, with how people are living. We know from this report that the formula produces amounts that are well below actual school division expenditures by $6.6 billion. It's found in the report that 50% of the funds are being provided locally. So this legislative agenda, again, will help us to continue messaging this and getting our word out, and the status quo just won't do anymore. So that's a really important part. The other part is accountability and the changes that are very severe for our schools. So that is a huge part of our advocacy. And then I also wanted to mention that, you know, again, the students are interested, and we're working on ways to incorporate their voice because they are powerful and they know what's going on in our schools, and if they're not into education, we're never going to succeed. So again, I want to thank Michael Malloy, our Legislative Director, and also Beth Vizioli, our Executive Director of Communications, for helping us to get materials together in a way that is informative and gets it done because we have a lot of information to share. So yes, so thank you, and thank you to the Board for amendments that you all submitted, and we did a really good job of working things out together and coming to a nice consensus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you. This is something that I think every Fairfax County resident should care deeply about. The state is one of the best places to obtain a high-quality public education for your children. But if you look at how the state funds public schools, it's one of the 10 worst among the 50 states in our union. So while we have a public education system on par with New York and Massachusetts, our state funding is more like Alabama and Mississippi, and that is simply not sustainable. The disparity in funding from the state needs to be remedied. Positive work was accomplished this past year, but there's much more that needs to be done. The total amount determined by the independent J-LARC, which is a part, a component of the state legislature, is $568.8 million. That's more than half a billion dollars per year. So if you've lived in the county for 20 years, as I have, that's over $10 billion that Fairfax County residents have had to make up for because the state hasn't paid its fair share. And if you wonder why your property taxes are higher, it's because the state is not paying what it's due, what Fairfax County should receive under the state funding formula. There's an assumption down in Richmond that all of us are rich folks who, you know, can send our kids to private school or public school. But what we have is a system in which one-third of our students, 60,000 students out of 180,000, are economically disadvantaged. We have special education students, that's almost 20%. We have English language learners, also approximately 20%. We are a much more diverse, much more complex place than we might have been in decades past. And so we need every taxpayer dollar because from the state, because if the state doesn't provide it, then we as local taxpayers have to pay it in kind. So I ask for your advocacy with your state legislators to ensure that they pay their fair share so your property taxes become more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I will take a turn. It was just a couple months ago that Virginia was named the best state in America to do business, the best Commonwealth in America to do business. And the reason given was because of our exceptional public education system. And so imagine what we could do if we were just given the average amount of money that other states get to support our students and our educators. And so even despite the conversation about how great our schools are in the Commonwealth of Virginia and how they're leading to us being the best state in the Union to do business and to create jobs, public education is under attack in Virginia, and we have never had a more important legislative program than we have this year because we're dealing with two existential threats to public education. Number one, the inadequate funding we receive from our state partners. Obviously, it is an entire team effort, and they can't get it done alone, especially with an adversarial governor. And number two, we have a Virginia Board of Education that is hell-bent on damaging the very schools that have led this Commonwealth to be determined as the best state in the Union to do business. Let me be as straight on this as I can. The new standards that they have cooked up without thinking through, because let's be clear, there are dozens upon dozens of questions that they have not yet thought through, even though they've already approved them, would rule that almost all of the schools in Virginia are off track, that only one middle school is doing a great job in all of Virginia. If you think that sounds like it's half-baked, it's because it is. On top of that, you know, the last time we went through this process, it was kind of phased in over time. School divisions were partnered with the state so that it could, so that the transition would be smooth. This time, not so much. This time, it's happening midway through the school year, there's no phase-in plan, there's not answers to fundamental questions, and there's no additional funds. Not, let alone to actually fund the work we do in public schools, but to also deal with transitioning to this new network. So when I tell people that the new standards that they're pushing for the Governor's Virginia Board of Education include penalizing families, penalizing schools for supporting families whose students have IEPs, they're shocked. How could anybody do that? Well, I think that is a question that is perfectly ripe for the Virginia Board of Education to be answering. And that is just one example of the many, many things that we're talking about. So I appreciate the hard work that's gone into this from our legislative liaisons because it does center those two fundamental questions, one about funding, but the second one about how we support our schools with accountability so that they can remain exceptional. We all want high standards. We all want high standards, but we also want to be able to meet them as a Commonwealth and to make them reasonable. If you set people up for failure because that's your goal, that is exactly what you will get. So we've got a long year ahead of us, but this is going to be a fundamental part of that conversation, and I very much appreciate all the collaboration that colleagues have had on this because this is something we need a united front on. Our Board, our educators, our families, our students, thank you, Ms. Sawant, for speaking to this topic. We're all in this together. We sink or swim together, and I think we're ready for the conversation. So thank you all very much. Ms. Dixitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A lot of my colleagues have shared really great information and awareness piece. I'm going to speak not only as a Board member, but also an immigrant, a parent of FCPA student, who's, my son just graduated from FCPA, and a minority community member. The FCPA schools is, were so, is so important for our community, our immigrants who are coming to this great county and creating a family here. Our students get great education, and it's very disheartening to see that the taxes we pay to the state and the money is not coming back to us. It's most of the wealthiest, one of the wealthiest county in the country, Fairfax County, and we are seeing like $500 million deficit from state. So that is unacceptable. I think community should know, I'm going to create awareness in my community about this, and we need to hold the Virginia state accountable for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. Mr. McElveen?
Thank you. I too want to thank Mr. Malloy for his dedication to this work over many years, as well as Dr. Anderson and Ms. Maron for very ably bringing forward this program to us tonight. It is a very impressive program, and particularly because it is coming to us on an accelerated timeline. In the past, as folks may remember, this would be brought to us in the November timeframe, and then we would present it to legislators in December, and that would give us no time to work with legislators on potential legislation. So I'm very excited that this expedited timeline will get this in front of our legislators so that we can actually work on getting some of these things put into language for bills this year. this year. I do want to just highlight our priorities document. There have been questions from board members and the public as to what our legislative priorities are. Yes, this is a massive program. It always has been, although smaller than it had been in the past. But if you want to look at one page that really identifies what this board sees as the most critical priorities at the federal and state level, you can find it in this document. And I do want to pull out a couple things from that just to highlight. My colleagues have obviously talked about J-LARK, but there are a few other funding priorities that we have listed in here, which really cut to the core of the work of this board and our community's needs on a day-to-day basis, one of which is the wrap-back program. We need funding for that so we can get real-time background checks on our employees. That's something that affects everyone in our schools every day. Increased funding for free meals for students. I would love to see universal free meals for all students like we had during the pandemic, and that's something we will continue to fight for in this program. Pedestrian safety. Folks may have seen in the news that we had four pedestrian deaths in a 10-day period just recently in this county. We've had students hit in just about every community. I know just in my own neighborhood, we had a student hit on the first day of school. So this is a major priority, and VDOT frankly is not doing enough to address it. Mental health funding, infrastructure funding, and last but certainly not least, early childhood funding, which is something that this board has been passionate about for many years, and we must continue to work to fund adequately. So thank you again to our liaisons for this. It's a great, great work. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McAlveen. Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and I also want to thank Ms. Maron and Dr. Anderson for their hard work and Mr. Malloy for their hard work, for his hard work as well in getting this done so quickly. I did want to mention, I think the advocacy for fully funding IDA, for free meals, for the J-LARK, as my colleagues have mentioned, is very, very important. And I think that information really needs to get out, as well as in combination with the extra difficulty of meeting accreditation standards in the middle of the school year without any phasing. But I also wanted to mention that I think we need to think about, when we're looking at public education funding, we're looking at our teacher's salary, and I'm hearing from constituents who are disappointed that certain teachers that they wish they would come, very qualified teachers, are turning down the jobs because of the salaries they're getting paid. And we in Virginia are less than the 50-state average in what we pay teachers. We need to think about, our special education funding has been underfunded for many years. These buckets of funding that we're advocating for cannot just be replacements for what we're already getting, but they, in some ways, need to be in addition to. And that balance needs to be figured out because public education is underfunded currently. And so the conversation about making sure that the state and the federal government pay their fair share has to be done in conjunction with what is the appropriate amount that we need to have an excellent public education system, and I don't want that point to get lost.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Echoing the sentiment you expressed, Mr. Chairman, on accountability, unfortunately, a state Board of Education are appointed by a current governor just for the political gain. They did this to us, this to our public schools, entire public school system in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I don't know whether we'll be successful in making major changes from that through upcoming legislative session, but I mean, what I see is, what I see is a grand design, grand plan behind the governor and his appointees to discredit the public schools, discredit public school system so that they could divert the resources to some areas. Mr. Chairman, that is very unfortunate.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. All right. Ms. St. John Cunningham.
I echo what everybody said, and I really want to thank the work of the two colleagues that were, our two colleagues that did this work on our legislative agenda. They put a lot of time into this. I just want to say that the most impactful investment as a community that we can make is in our children. That's our future. And a free and public education is the cornerstone of our democracy. That's why all of this matters. That's why all of this is important.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Go back for Mr. Dunn. Oh, all right. I apologize. All right. Let's see here. I would like to call on Dr. Anderson for an omnibus amendment.
I move to amend the 2025 Fairfax County School Board State and Federal Legislative Program by adopting amendments 1 through 16 as detailed in the agenda item on Board Docs.
Is there a second? It's Ms. Maron. Mr. Dunn. Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I was hoping that they would be posted. Thank you. In addition to some of the information that was just talked about, I want to put a final point on some of these amendments. Some of these amendments are to clarify existing positions that may be a little obsolete because their time has passed, but there are some that have been listed to really offer greater clarification. For example, a great deal has been made of the NAEP or the NAPES scores of recent years in terms of their importance. But one of our positions in this agenda is, I'm sorry, in these amendments, is to clarify those NAPES scores. For example, how many students are taking them, just to offer some context, because they are very limited. And so we want for the federal government to be in the forefront of ensuring that that kind of data comes with context. We also want to ask for flexibility to use alternative assessments such as AP and IB. We know those students are excelling in our schools. We know when they go off to college, they're also excelling there. So we'd like to have flexibility to include some of those test results under the accountability. And I won't go into some of the details that have already been shared. And we also, one of the amendments is to maintain ultimate authority over the establishment of charter schools. We know that there's a grand plan at play, so we want to make sure that the final authority rests with the school board. And lastly, I want to just share that, there's 16. I'm not going to be able to cover all of them, but the last one that I want to highlight is that we want for the federal government, particularly HUD, to end their reliance on working with organizations such as Great Schools in order to determine school quality. Great Schools has no idea of what happens in our buildings. I would much, we would all much prefer that there be a more robust system of gathering that information because we do know how impactful it is to our community.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Dunn. Would you like to speak to your second?
No, I just wanted, no, I just wanted to thank my colleagues, Dr. Anderson and Ms. Maron, and everyone on the Board who has worked on these options because making sure that our schools have the necessary funding to provide a world-class education to every child, regardless of their background, regardless of their family situation, regardless of which school they attend, so they have the opportunity and the resources to explore their interests and realize their potential. It should be not just the highest priority of the school board, but also of our community because as the supervisors, as our state legislators say, as we always say, our schools are the foundation of this community, are the foundation of the local economy, and the foundation of everything that happens and the basis of our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Maron.
So as has been said, there is this big theme, and it is the dismantling of public education. And I know it sounds unbelievable, but I've seen, and we're seeing people catching wind. And when we looked at these amendments, you know, we really focused on trying to further reinforce the local control of our schools. There's a reason in Virginia that school boards retain the local controls, and that's part of the state constitution. And when the governor does things like pass executive orders or change state standards without input from local school divisions or funding for those changes, that undermines our local authority. And I personally have seen this before because this is No Child Left Behind 2.0. So that was the federal education law that came in in 2002, when I worked in the Title I office in the U.S. Department of Education, and the whole design was show that schools are failing, stop funding them, give families vouchers, and then public schools are gone. This is the same thing. The new accountability plan wants to show that we're failing, create that narrative, but it's very dangerous, and we only have to look to Houston as an example. In Houston, per state law, the superintendent was removed, and the elected school board of Houston was put to the side and a new board assigned. We don't want that to happen here. We have, we know what's best for our students. I know the community believes that they want to be as close to our schools as possible. So these amendments in this legislative program further bolster our, and remind us all, and when we speak with our legislative representatives, we have seen this before. We've got to fight to not let it happen again. So I thank my colleagues for adding in these, and adding in some really nice ones like college and workforce readiness pieces, especially about STEAM and quantum information science and artificial intelligence brought by Ms. Dixitt. So we got a lot of ground to cover, but I'm glad that we could put this in one nice neat package. Thank you.
Dr. Anderson.
Yes, one of the things that I failed to share earlier is that this legislative, this program has three parts, obviously the main body, then we have the priority positions. There's also a third component that is not available yet, which is our joint priority position with the Board of Supervisors that will be coming in the next few weeks as they take on that work. We are a little bit earlier in our schedule as, than we've been before, which is why it's not part of the program at this point. But it will be an addendum that is added when we are able to meet with the Board of Supervisors after they have started their legislative work.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Seeing no others, we will go ahead and vote for the motion that is scrolling on the screen. It's rather extensive. Maybe we can go back and forth a couple times. All right. It's also available on Board Docs. All those in favor of the omnibus amendment? Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McAlveen, Dr. Anderson, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, and myself. That is unanimous. The motion passes. Agenda item 5.04, action item, special rule of order on motions. I call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
I'm so sorry. Just point of clarification.
Point of order.
We vote, point of order.
Thank you.
We voted on the amendments, but we did not vote on the main motion yet.
Your point of order is recognized and agreed with. We have amended the main motion with that omnibus motion, and we will now move on to voting on the legislative program as amended. All those in favor of the legislative program as amended, please raise your hand. All right. Ms. Maron, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McAlveen, Dr. Anderson, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, and myself. That is unanimous as well. The motion actually passes this time. Thank you for the point of order. All right. Agenda item 5.04, action item, special rule of order on motions. I call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the school board adopt a special rule of order requiring school board members to submit final language for non-adjourned motions to the board clerk and all other board members at least 48 hours in advance of the regular meeting in which it is to be considered as detailed in the agenda item. This special rule of order shall be reviewed by the board no later than the end of the 2024-25 school year to determine efficacy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Seismarheiser. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, this is something the board discussed at the retreat a few weeks ago. This motion is part of the school board's efforts for continuous improvement in doing its work. The board can do the best work when each board member has sufficient time to the research, to consult with other board members and staff, and think through before making decisions. Giving notice to the other board members at least 48 hours in advance for a motion that a board member wants to propose should be a minimum requirement. Such 48 hours of advance notice also helps the public providing their feedback to the board before the vote. Tell maybe some board members, hopefully not, who are uncomfortable with this new approach, but I believe that this will help the board become better disciplined and produce better work. I hope that my colleagues will join me to giving ourselves an opportunity to try this. The board can review its efficacy by the end of this school year and change its mind if this new approach does not work. One more thing to add is that the difference between a majority vote and a supermajority of 2/3 will be just one vote in the most of cases. For our board of 12 members, a majority is seven votes, while the 2/3 is eight. So the difference is only one vote, and if there is any matter that a board member has been unable to give the required 48-hour notice, but yet the matter is considered so important that the board member will just need to convince one more board member to achieve the supermajority. I ask my colleagues for the support of this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Seismarheiser, would you like to speak to your second?
I think Mr. Moon covered it very well, but I just also wanted to add that this really only prevents new amendments or main motions that aren't on the agenda. If there's an amendment to a board member submitted motion or other board members, or a follow-on to a board member submitted motion, that's allowed within the 48 hours. And again, this can be suspended for 2/3's vote, as Mr. Moon said, as only one more vote than it takes to actually pass. But the other thing I wanted to mention is that any motion that may have been thought about during that 48-hour window can be brought at the next meeting. So it's a two-week delay, which if for anything that doesn't fall in these rules within a 48-hour window, and that really gives us a lot of time, it gives us more sufficient time to do our work thoughtfully. Sometimes when things are brought within that 48 hours, unless there's some significant emergency, by which point we can get the 2/3's vote, if it's that much of an emergency, it makes it difficult for all of us to have the conversations we need. As many of you may know, the Sunshine laws restrict our ability to have conversations more than one-on-one outside of a public meeting. And while that's really, really great in terms of the public being aware of the business we're doing, it does take longer for us to have conversations with 11 other people to make sure everybody understands what motion we're bringing, the implications, to have those conversations, to work collaboratively, to make changes that need to be made. And so this just makes sure that we have at least 48 hours to have the time to have those one-on-one conversations with each other and to be thoughtful and talk to staff and think through the implications of what we're doing. If there's something that's urgent, we can still do it with a 2/3's vote, and things that are not urgent within that 48 hours could always be brought at the next meeting. So it just gives us space to be thoughtful about our work.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. The follow-on motions. A few months ago, we had a motion that was at the table in which we did not find the superintendent to be in compliance of any EL. That was not predetermined, and that is not a member-submitted motion. How would that work under this new proposal?
Because there are two possible outcomes to the agendized item as written in the agenda, and that is compliance or not.
So then, last time, we were able to submit a, we were able to submit a substitute motion rather than voting not in compliance. We offered a substitute motion, so that would not then be allowed?
It would if it was provided 48 hours before the meeting. And I believe the EL reports are provided to the board well in advance of the meeting.
Okay, so it's just the fact that it's already written does not, would not preclude from switching?
Correct. If something is on the agenda, the amendments, follow-ons, whatever, have to be submitted 48 hours in advance.
Okay, so that one is already built in?
Yeah.
And another point of clarification, I think I'm a little unclear. The first portion that says per Robert's rules, this motion can be adopted by either 2/3's or with a majority. Maybe our parliamentarian can help, yes, can help us with that. Why either? Usually, we have one or the other. Why is this one like particularly flexible? Because why would you shoot for 2/3's if you can just get majority?
It's a majority of the entire membership, not just a straight majority vote. It's actually an elevated voting requirement because this is a special rule of order.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that second part?
This is actually an elevated voting requirement because it's a special rule of order. But a majority of the entire membership, that would be seven, regardless of how many members are here, is sufficient to adopt this.
In other words, 2/3's of a seven-person quorum would not be sufficient for adopting this.
I see. So we need, okay, thank you for that. That's it for right now.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Dunn.
When the motion was originally circulated to school board members, there was a lot more explanatory language, but this is the totality of the motion. Is that correct?
It says, "as indicated on the agenda item," and the agenda item is the same that's been circulated.
Okay. 48 hours in advance of the regular meeting. I just wanted to clarify my understanding. The regular meeting starts at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, so 48 hours before that The regular meeting starts at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, so 48 hours before that would be 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday. Is that correct?
Yes.
And what determines whether a motion is agendized or non-agendized?
Sorry? The chair and the superintendent, as the governance manual states, work together to build the meeting agenda.
So if a motion is submitted by a school board member more than 48 hours in advance, it will be included on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any exceptions to the term non-agendized motions?
There are two categories. There's agendized motions and non-agendized motions, right? So if you brought a motion, that would not be an agendized motion, so it would require 48 hours. If you wanted to change something on the agenda, on a motion on the agenda already, that would require 48 hours. The things that don't require the 48 hours, so for example, somebody couldn't bring a motion at the last possible minute and think, nobody can amend this, amend this, nobody can replace this, et cetera. So if you bring something to the agenda, other people are allowed to offer amendments, et cetera, inside of that 48 hour. And that's detailed in the agenda item.
So amendments to motions don't need to be?
To board member brought motions. In other words, you have the agenda before you a week in advance of the meeting, right? So if you want to offer amendments to agendized items or substitute motions or follow-on motions, 48-hour rule applies. If you bring a new motion to the table outside of that 48-hour window, somebody can offer an amendment to that. We can't cut somebody off just because somebody may have submitted at 6:59 p.m. on Tuesday and think, ah, now they can't touch it. Not the case. Also, there's a big carve-out here. If you get two-thirds of the board, you can bring any motion.
Is there any, does this affect at all the rights of school board members to object to items on the consent agenda?
No.
Even on the dais?
Objecting is not a motion.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Although I would say that the consent agenda is also posted a week in advance of the meeting, giving board members ample time to study it and provide their objections early.
I'll note, there, there, it is a regular occurrence that items on board docs are not posted until sometimes the day of the hearing. So it's certainly not the case that the full agenda and everything that goes with that agenda are posted a week in advance. That has not been the case for any hearing as long as I've been on this board.
Mr. Chairman, since this is my motion, could I respond to that?
You've not been, you have to wait to be recognized, Mr. Moon, I'm sorry. And since there's nobody else, you can have a go-back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We discussed that aspect at the last retreat too, Mr. Dunn. So we are, we did ask a superintendent or anybody else to post the necessary documents as soon as possible. We can do our jobs in the best way we can.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Dr. Anderson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Moon, I could not make out what you had said. Can you repeat your last statement?
We did ask a superintendent, you're asking me, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Chairman, may I? Okay. We did ask a superintendent to provide, you know, post, you know, all the necessary documents that we need to make a decision at the regular board meetings as soon as possible.
Okay. Would as soon as possible be more than 48 hours?
Hopefully more than 40 hours, yes, because we need to have the 40 hours.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure. I, I got lost a little bit, and I apologize because I wasn't at the retreat when this was discussed regarding substitute motions. Let's just kind of go back to an example that I have, just so I can kind of structure my thinking. When Ms. Marin and I brought the motion for phasing to the boundary policy, clearly that was done way within 48 hours. Can substitute motions to that be brought at the dais in this setting and this?
I believe the final language for that motion was brought the night before the meeting, so it would have to be brought 48 hours in advance, just like the substitute, the substitute motion would have to, would not qualify because it was brought within that period. In other words, you can't run out the clock by submitting a motion at 6:59 and think that nobody can offer an amendment or something else. The motion that you're speaking about, not the substitute, was sent to the board final language the night before the meeting. So that wouldn't have been possible because it was not within the, it was not outside of the 48-hour window.
So let's just walk this back a little bit. Let's say it was sent within 48 hours. Substitute motion can just be brought at any point after that?
Correct. Or an amendment or what have you. That way, a board member is not, or the board is not penalized for somebody sharing a motion at the last minute.
While I don't agree with your timing, thank you for answering the question.
Mr. McDaniel?
Quick, quick question. And I should, I could probably gather this if I read closer. If an item is, like, we had an item pulled off of consent this morning, which is fine. How would this rule, if passed, impact amendments that would potentially be brought to an item pulled off consent for action, if at all?
It, it is not an agendized item, and since that's happening within the 48-hour window, you're allowed to offer amendments. All right. Seeing no others, we will go to the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the screen, Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, and myself, all those opposed, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Dunn, all those abstaining, Mr. McElveen, will the board, or will the clerk read the vote?
Did you indicate that Ms. Lady was a yes? I'm sorry.
Correct.
Okay. So then it's 9-2-1, the motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item 5.05, award of contract outdoor classrooms, phase one, excuse me, phase one bid, package one. I call on Ms. Marin for a motion.
I move that the school board award a contract for the outdoor classrooms, phase one, bid package one, to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Henley Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $1,397,000, and authorize the division superintendent or the chief of facility services and capital programs to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Is there a second? Mr. McElveen? Second? All right. Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to your motion?
I've been waiting for this day since September 2022, when the board approved the use of one-time-stay-provided funds to do things just like this, to improve our facilities for students. Now, you'll see that there are two other contracts later on in the consent agenda that are very similar with two other bid packages. And I chose to pull this off because I think it's really important that we stop and understand the process of getting our facilities upgraded and also celebrate that we're having so many schools, the number is 17, 17 schools, getting these classrooms. So the other two contracts that remain on consent, they're all, all fine and dandy. I just pulled this one off to speak to it, and it also happens to include a lot of schools that I represent. So I do want to share that what is motivated this is to have equity in outdoor learning in our schools. Up until a few years ago, we had schools that happened to have parents or volunteers or a teacher that could make an outdoor classroom. I actually made one out of tree stumps at my child's elementary school. And that's great, but that's not equitable. And research shows that students learning outside actually has a ton of research-proven benefits in academics and health and social. And it's also, if we're trying to get our students to connect to the climate even more, this is a great way to do it. So we approved the funds, and the funds were there, but it took a long time to get to this point. And I do have some questions that I wanted to ask the superintendent to understand more about this process, and so in hopes that we could learn how to improve this process in the future. So what was, Dr. Ree, can you speak to what was the timeline of this initiative from initial board approval vote, which I said was September 1st of '22, to contract award tonight?
The timeline, I think you've established it, would be from 2022 to this evening, so it's roughly two years.
Right. That, I did, I did say that. I'm sorry. I'm so excited.
It's okay.
So we had money earmarked for these outdoor learning spaces, and initially, the construction was expected to begin in summer of 2023 and completed within two years. So, Dr. Ree, can you speak to how we got off of that timeline? Why did that not occur?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Samansky, I know, has been tracking this process since she arrived in Fairfax County Public Schools. Would you please clarify some of the challenges we faced?
Certainly. So as you mentioned, we had funding approved, that funding loaded in fall of 2022. We then went on into procurement and had an architect onboard to start the design process in, I'd say, January or very beginning of 2023. Since then, we've gone through the design process and spent quite a bit of time going through our permitting. And so what you're seeing tonight is three packages. Those are the first groupings of projects that have received a permit and were able to go out to bid. The remaining are still with the county or close to being ready to go out to bid.
Okay, thank you. And I do have to admit that I had knowledge of the permitting process because, as I learned in January of this year, of the 37 outdoor classrooms slated to be reviewed and, and construction begun the previous summer, by this January, only eight of those sites had been permitted. So due to some continued follow-up, by June 8th, the school division had received 19 permits. So that's a pretty rapid expansion over that time. Can you explain what in the permitting process, like, takes so long?
Each school is site-specific, but I think in general, one of the biggest hurdles we have hit with the outdoor classroom project in particular is an interpretation by the county. They were seeing this as adding additional space or capacity and therefore needing to bring things like the plumbing code back up to code and asking that improvements be made to the inside of the building, which, you know, we definitely felt strongly against because it was way outside the scope of building this outdoor patio space. We didn't have the funds, obviously, to add, like, drinking fountains and whatnot and what have you to all these projects. So that kind of just speaks at a high level. Again, each project is a little bit more nuanced from one to the other. But, you know, during that time, we got involved and had more conversations with the county and got some of the ones that were a little, you know, more amenable across the finish line. And then we wanted to make sure we had enough ready to go to put together a competitive package. We wanted to bundle them to make sure we had a good economies of scale, and that's why we got them into these three packages that you see up here tonight.
Thank you. So in summary, and I want to correct myself, 22 are being approved tonight, and 15 remain. So these 22 schools are all middle and high schools, which all have a population of at least 1,000 students. So we're talking about a lot of students using these every day. And I think we really need to, you know, look to the county to be a leader with us and a collaborator to prioritize these public projects that are being used by thousands of students every single day. And I certainly hope that future facilities work does not take this long because our students remain the county's constituents even when they're inside our school building. I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your second?
Thank you. Yes. Well, I, I do want to first thank Ms. Marin for her persistence with this. This was obviously something that came forward during the pandemic, not only because of the pandemic, but because it's important for students. But it has certainly, the process has well outlasted the pandemic, unfortunately. But that does mean we're prepared for the next one, at least in this aspect, so that, that is good. But I do think it also shows the importance of persistence. What I have seen, coming back to this board, is that things in the past that this board has approved and expected to move forward, whether it was salad bars that took 12 years, or, or there are countless examples. But we need to find a way to make sure that the, the initiatives that we set forth aren't just wiped away by, by mid-level staff. And this is, this again is a good example. But I'm very grateful to staff as well who have persisted and made sure that this comes forward. This is a great benefit to our students, to our teachers, and it will certainly help teach the importance of not only getting to green, but environmental stewardship. And that's something we can all be grateful for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. And Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you. And again, I appreciate the hard work of staff. This is something we talked about when we started the previous board about expanding outdoor classrooms. I did have a question, though. I noticed that there's about 15, maybe a few more schools that aren't contracted, either on the two that, packages that are on consent or the one that is on action. And two out of those three are in the Braddock District and are large schools. Robinson is an incredibly large school that doesn't have a contract. Woodson is another one. Annandale, which is not located in the Braddock District, but has a decent amount of Braddock students. So I'm kind of curious, in fact, I think the only one, West Springfield and Irving are on there, but again, I'm kind of curious why such large schools with middle and a high school combined, as Robinson hasn't gotten a contract yet.
Sure. I'd need to get more information because, again, it's really nuanced to the design itself. If the existing plumbing code was way off from what's in the existing building, again, we really have to take it on a case-by-case basis. I will say, though, since getting involved and we've been trying to build stronger partnership with the county at the staff level, and so that's where you saw that big uptick in a bunch of permits being released. And we're continuing to work very collaboratively with them to get the rest over the finish line. And so I do want to commend the staff and the county staff working with us through that in the last six months.
That's, I'm so glad to hear about the collaboration with the county. I know that environmental stewardship and outdoor learning spaces is important to them as well. I just wanted, I was just kind of curious when I saw the few that were left, why there were so many in that particular district and what was going on. I don't think it's a county. I just was curious if it's something with the school, if it's something I need to advocate for as that district rep. But I'm glad to, I'm really glad to hear about the collaboration. I know this is an issue that's important for both of us. I know the county supports it as well. So I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. And thank you as well to Ms. Marin for her continued advocacy on this. Along the lines of what we just asked, can you speak a little bit, Ms. Samansky, regarding the criteria that was used to determine the schools that would have outdoor classrooms?
You know, that was determined back in 2022 when they were figuring out how to allocate that one-time funding. So I would have to go back and look at that. I believe middle schools and high schools were selected because that's what the funding could allow. There's a lot more elementary schools. So I believe the strategy was to focus on the secondary schools, and also those schools typically have a much higher enrollment and can affect more students and impact them.
Okay. And that's very curious because along the lines of what Ms. Seismarheiser just said, none of the middle schools in the, that serve Mason District students have been identified. Glasgow, which can serve a lot of students, and Poe, and home, and, I'm sorry, and Luther Jackson, those are not on the list. So I'd be curious to find that information. Secondly, can you speak to what the scope of the outdoor classroom? What should families think, what should families look to being erected in those spaces?
Sure. And I'm happy to actually provide a little narrative. We were actually working on that this morning in advancement of the hopeful passing of this action item. And at a high scale, it's going to be nice paved area so that you can actually have teaching and learning take place, seeding, I think rain collection, and a variety of sustainable features.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. All right. Seeing no others, we will go ahead and have the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the screen, Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, and myself. That is unanimous. The motion carries. Congratulations. All right. Agenda item 6.01, performance review instructional program, EL 9 monitoring report. I call on Dr. Reed for a monitoring report on executive limitation 9 instructional program.
So, good evening, Chairman Frisch. And we are teeing up the presentation for executive limitation nine. And this is discussing the instructional program. And we recently had several lively conversations, both at senior leadership and also this morning at the all-county principal meeting. So this is clearly one of our core missions, our instructional program here in Fairfax County. And I'm not sure, Janet, are you running it or dancing? Okay, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. Thank you. As a reminder, executive limitation nine talks about our program of instructions for all students that's aligned with the division's strategic plan goals and offers innovative academic learning experiences and so forth, as you see on the screen. And again, with, as with all executive limitations at the time of this report, to the best of my knowledge, information and belief, we've gathered information and evidence that I believe supports compliance with the believe supports compliance with the board's executive limitation associated with this topic. So this evening, I'll walk through the essential components. There are actually 11 areas of EL 9. And on this slide, you see items 1 through 5. And on the next slide, you'll see items 6 through 11. So what I'm going to do is, tonight, again, we've tried to work with adding some newly added or updated areas of executive limitation 9. And I want to remind those watching and those here this evening to note that the full report is available on Board Docs. So the first topic area of this EL is to deliver academic curriculum and a rigorous instructional program. And it's important to note that FCPS aligns its academic curriculum and instructional program to the Virginia Standards of Learning, or our SOLs. And there are new standards in English, Math, and Social Studies. The full implementation of the 2024 English Standards of Learning and the 2023 Mathematics Standards of Learning will happen in the 24-25 school year. That would be this year. So while we're doing all the other accreditation and accountability conversations, we're also updating standards. And Social Studies is currently being revised to match the implementation of new standards in the 25-26 school year, which will be next year. Planning and pacing guides here in the division provide a high degree of direction and high-quality curriculum resources to guide instructional planning and to work towards ensuring all standards of learning are addressed. I want to remind folks that our mathematics, planning, and pacing guides reflect VDOE revisions and support our goal of all students minimally reaching algebra by eighth grade. Again, this is one of our strategic plan goal three measures. The basal curriculum materials that have been purchased for K-6 Language Arts are also being adopted at this time. So we want to make sure that we're ensuring programs, curriculum, and materials support equitable access and opportunity. And we'll be talking a little bit about that later this evening in the academic matters portion. We'll be drilling down into literacy. But I also want to note that we have new English Language Development basal resource materials for the 24-25 school year. And in fact, this is actually a first in the school division to have aligned materials that are basal materials for our English Language Development for multilingual learners. So as we also work to think about equitable access, want to make sure we're highlighting our universal design for learning work and excited to continue our work with in-person high-impact tutoring. And you can see the data on the slide. As of May this past year, we had 10,800 students served through high-impact tutoring. And for this year, we'll be in 169 elementary and middle schools with approximately 550 tutors. We also want to make sure that in EL 9, we are regularly reviewing instructional programs and practices. We also have a seven-year cycle for conducting review for new basal resources, which are generally aligned to the cycle of revision for the Virginia Standards of Learning. However, those are moving more quickly than we're able to continue to keep up with them, particularly this year. I do appreciate that the board members will be identifying K-12 Social Studies representatives for the basal resource adoption review. And we've moved up our K-12 Mathematics basal resource adoption review a year into the 25-26 implementation for next year, which is a year ahead, and 26-27 for elementary. As we recognize, new math standards are also going to require a new approach. So additionally, the Department of Special Services is going to continue reviewing the enhancement plan and associated data. We want to continue to ensure consistency and instructional expectations across all schools and program. And this did garner quite a little bit of conversation with the team, but we do know that with the Virginia Literacy Act, the same training and evidence-based strategies have really been provided across the entire school division. During this past summer, we had over 5,800 elementary teachers and specialists attend three days of professional development. And we've provided specific guidance for Language Arts and Social Studies teachers to ensure that sixth-grade students in the middle schools and at the elementary schools are all receiving comparable time with evidence-based literacy instruction as sixth-grade, so sixth-grade, whether they reside in the three middle schools or the elementary schools are receiving the same guidance. So I think we're on slide 10, right? Secondary grading and reporting guidelines were updated this year for a one-year purpose while we're reviewing those, obviously, in the governance committee of the board, as well as subsequent to the governance committee review, likely the grading committee will reconvene. The division's assessment plan outlines a collection of assessments that fulfill various roles in measuring academic participation, student learning, and so forth. At the elementary level, schools are provided with instructional time allocations as well that support the development of academic learning. So here we see the final set of newly updated evidence about consistency across all schools and programs. When we look at our multi-tiered systems of support and how we're working across the system with that, there are division-wide expectations and a research-based framework. For this particular school year, all interventions are going to be documented and progress will be tracked through our student information system. All schools also have developed a school improvement and innovation plan that aligns to Goal 3 of the strategic plan. So that level of alignment really provides some organizational coherence, which I believe and you will see in our goal reports, is really moving our student achievement forward. So this item talks about how we effectively measure student progress. For this 24-25 school year, we have division-wide common assessments. And this is a first in terms of more formative assessments, and these will be in mathematics, reading, and science at the elementary grades. This will be at the unit level. And sixth-grade students in middle school will also participate in the reading unit assessments. At middle and high school levels, division-wide common assessments will be used in select courses, primarily, again, in reading, math, and science at designated schools. Screening and growth assessments will continue, and staff will continue to monitor strategic plan goals. During this particular academic year, we will continue to have updates on the efforts of the division in all five goal areas. In FCPS, again, we do have a strategic and intentional data collection effort that ensures information is collected on a regular basis and reviewed by the team and where necessary resources deployed. So just a lot of data collection as part of this work. The next part of this executive limitation shows how we provide an instructional program that includes opportunities for students to develop executive functioning skills, social, emotional, and portrait of graduate skills, as well as talents and interests in other more specialized areas. We have a consistent scope and sequence and required advisory lessons, as well as equitable access to lessons in academic and career planning, academic habits, and social emotional learning. We are also, this particular school year, have actually implemented, we worked on the design last year, but we implemented a pilot to expand the development of executive functioning skills and support in grades pre-K through 12 at several of our schools. Now, I'd like to highlight how we implement inclusive and accessible instructional programs and practices. There's an extensive list on the screen of our work related to the enhancement plan for students with disabilities in the 24-25 school year. And there are several, I think, that we want to highlight, particularly implementing machine translations via the Google Translation Hub, finalizing the C*'s functionality to securely translate IEP and 504 documents, and looking at an inclusive instructional education framework with guiding principles that I think are really critical. I know another piece that I don't think made it on our slide around this topic is our connection for staff very, very early, like at the, by the first day of the year in terms of what the accommodation needs are for students in general ed classes. So as we provide more opportunities in general education classrooms for students with IEPs, that the IEPs are more accessible to general ed staff as we work with students. Also want to talk about some efforts around our Twilight Program. And last year, of the 275 students that were served, 94% either went on to the next grade level satisfactorily or graduated. Again, our summer learning program provided additional opportunities. And enrollment for last summer, the summer of 2024, across all learning programs was approximately 35,000 students. So I think there's a reason why many staff are saying it was a short summer, because many staff were doing summer school with 35,000 students involved. Item nine on this report is about supporting meaningful research-based innovation in instructional delivery. Again, this is about embedding our portrait of a graduate and learning model in our core content. We're also looking at a framework of AI principles and guidance for staff around this topic. We've also revised FCPS math standards, infusing computer science standards into the curriculum. And our ESBITs in collaboration with our educational technology team are working with staff to advance meaningful learning experiences around the development of digital literacy and digital citizenship in alignment with our international standards for technology and education. Also want to mention that we have appropriate and timely input from students, parents, and staff in the development of curriculum and instructional programs. We have a list of those committees on the slide, and these are examples, but they're not exhaustive, as we have many opportunities for stakeholders to provide input. To conclude this executive limitation, I want to share that we do ensure families have access to resources and information to support school success. We've launched a redesigned website this past August, which is more accessible, usable, and has a better and more consistent and intuitive structure. Families are accessing a variety of tools to support children's learning around Schoology and Talking Points. Resources are being provided on our public website on a variety of topics, and back-to-school nights have been exceptionally well-attended. So at this time, board, this concludes the summary of the monitoring report for Executive Limitation 9 Instructional Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. At this time, I now invite board members to ask any clarifying questions or provide comments. We're going to start with Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I'm going to try to go in order of this. I think for the first section of this, which is number one, one of the things that you provided, one of the new evidence, information that you provided is the provision of pacing guides, which have been in practice for quite some time. Can you kind of share a little bit in terms of why that is identified as new evidence?
Yes, ma'am. I believe it's because they've been updated to reflect the new standards. So they're not the former pacing guides. They are new, updated slides that match the new standards.
Okay. Thank you. Another question that I have, because I know we have had this continuing discussion on the provisions that are put forward by the central office and whether or not teachers are utilizing them and finding them useful. What information can you share regarding the pacing guides? Who is using them? Are they guidance or are they expected to be utilized? What feedback do we receive from staff regarding their utility?
So at this point, I can speak directly to the new reading basal in the K-6 realm. I've been in a number of elementary schools recently, and the pacing guides are really being utilized heavily because I know that our elementary teachers went through what was called the launch in classrooms. And then as we hit Unit 1, pretty much we were hitting Unit 1 across the division. And staff, I know Unit 1 has been more of a lift than the launch, but it's been very clear that the pacing guides are being utilized because as you move from school to school, grade levels across schools are very much so working in the same pacing space.
And how are we collecting that data? Or are we collecting that, those anecdotes?
I will have to say that Dr. Presidio or Ms. Klemenko, are we collecting that particular data? I know that, well, I'll be quiet. Are we collecting that data?
Well, we're trying to decide who's going to answer this question, so maybe we'll both give you some answers, and together it'll make a complete answer. The first thing I would say with the pacing guides, they are used heavily and have always been used heavily. It's been my experience since working here. We get feedback from principals, from resource teachers, instructional coaches that work with teachers to use those guides. And then we collect that information and feedback on an annual basis and do typically during the summer curriculum revisions and updates to those guides with teachers from our schools, right? So it's not just done in the central office, it's done collaboratively. So those are highly utilized. I don't know if no one wants to provide any additional information on the basal materials as well.
So I think what I would provide is, this year, and Dr. Reed mentioned it, we've also moved at the elementary level to common assessments. And so those common assessments are not just open to give them whatever you want, they're in a certain window, and they're based on those pacing guides. So I think we're going to have some really good data this year about pacing and achievement with that addition.
Thank you. Dr. Presidio, just a quick follow-up. And that data that you collect at the end of the year, what was the usage of the pacing guides of last year?
Well, we, again, collect qualitative data. We're not collecting quantitative data. So qualitatively, they're used heavily. But again, I couldn't tell you school by school, grade level by grade level, classroom by classroom quantitatively.
Thank you. I hope that we can perhaps get there. One of the components of this section is rigorous instructional program. Just really emphasis on the word rigorous. How do you evaluate that the rigor is consistently applied across our schools? I know that the program is available, but how are we determining rigor and whether or not that is consistent?
Well, I think that what's been important is matching our curriculum to the standards, right? The standards of learning. So assuming that the Virginia Department of Education is putting out standards that would be identified as rigorous, then our curriculum and our pacing guides have been designed to match those standards. I believe that we're really trying to, and we'll talk more about that in our Goal 3 report and probably Goal 5 report, we're looking at the academic intensity of our course-taking patterns, right? Middle through high school in particular, and it's specifically high school right now. And I think what we want to make sure is that as we look at the match between the level of intensity of courses, the GPA and test scores, and then post-secondary success, that there's a match that would, by back mapping, determine it was rigorous. Also, to Ms. Klemenko's point with the common assessments, you know, we have high expectations here in Fairfax County, and we want to make sure we maintain those for each and every student. And the ability for us to provide these time-sensitive common assessments means that we will know in real time, not at the end of a semester or at the end of a year, but in real time, whether we need to provide resources to lift our students to those standards.
Thank you. And if you were to look at my notes, when you get to page 10, one of the things you will see is, when you talked about the common assessments, I wrote, "very exciting." That, to me, is a great opportunity to evaluate consistency. But from what I think I understand, the rigor that we are utilizing, it's not our own definition, it's as defined by the standards as laid out by VDOE.
Currently, but as I mentioned, we are creating internal common assessments, which we believe will likely be more rigorous because we're working to accelerate our math trajectory specifically right now.
Thank you. The continuing evidence, this is, again, very helpful information to have, but what would be helpful for me is to understand better the impact of some of these activities. For example, there's lots of information here regarding the use of Title I funds. Can you speak a little bit to the impact of those funds as, not anecdotally, but as you have gathered it in some way, so that we know that there's a great return on investment, even though I think all of our gut tells us it is? I'm just looking for the evidence.
So, you know, I think that the school-wide instructional models in particular that we're looking at, we are seeing an improvement in students' achievement. You're going to see that in Goal 3 when we present that. We're also looking at participation in programs. The board has been very The Board has been very clear that all Title I schools need to have an opportunity to participate, for example, in Science Olympiad and Math Olympiad. This year, every school, every Title I school, elementary school, has Science Olympiad and Math Olympiad. And three years ago, that was not the case. So I think there's some really clear data points that say, you know what, this was, I mean, not unlike outdoor classrooms or salad bars, right? Like, this is a high-interest expectation of the school board, so we need to make it so. And our team has gone out and worked really hard to make sure that we have those programs now in our Title I schools. I will say, our Title I school staffing this year, we were very intentional with staffing early and much, much more robust staffing, both from our HR department and our Title I department recruiting and staffing our Title I schools night and day from last year to this year. I don't know if you want to add more about the impact of Title I, Ms. Klimenko or Dr. Presidio?
No, I mean, the only thing I would add is some of the things that we've added centrally, like the Math Olympiad, the Avid, you're not going to see it very discreetly. I think it's going to be a long-term investment when we start to look at course-taking patterns, you know, for Title I students as they matriculate up. Hopefully, we're going to start to see that increase of rigor in the courses they choose and their outcome. So I think there's a long-term investment here, too, that needs to be recognized.
Yeah, the Avid numbers, why don't you share those? Because I know that was another really heavy lift last year in terms of integrating Avid into our Title I elementaries.
And I don't have the number, but we are, we are on track to have every Title I school have an Avid program, I think, by next school year.
Right. Sure. And I appreciate that.
And when this is presented and we have some of these initiatives as designed to do certain things, what I would look for are some of those data points to really articulate what the impact of these activities are, because that continues to be missing. I think we're going to get more, but this is the core. This is the instructional program. So this is the place where I'd like to see those alignments be a lot tighter. I will take a go back.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Dunn.
I appreciate all the positive changes that are reflected in the presentation. I want to ask specifically, there was a report prepared in September 2022 by the American Institutes for Research entitled "A Special Education Comprehensive Program Review," and there were 10 pages of recommendations, pages 122 through 132. It had been my prior understanding before being sworn into the Board that there had not been complete fidelity of implementation of those recommendations, not for any negative reason, but pandemic and other reasons coming out of the pandemic. So I wanted to ask whether, this, this program doesn't make reference to that report, and there's a lot of positive changes, recommendations in that report that should be implemented. So I wanted to ask, what is the status of that report and the implementation of those recommendations?
Yes, sir. We actually did note that here, I believe, on number three, page seven of the actual report, and I don't recall where it is on the presentation, but on item three, it's under new evidence. And again, we've, this year, one of the things that we, I think it's sprinkled throughout, but in number three, we've retained a consultant, I know this fall, and I believe this week was the kickoff meeting with Dr. Julie Costin, who's going to work with us on a number of the associated data points and enhancement plan pieces. Dr. Presidio, do you want to, I think you've kind of worked on the special ed enhancement plan also. It looks like it's in continuing evidence in some places and new evidence in others, because some things about the plan are launching this year and some launched last year. Do you want to sum up kind of where we are with that?
Yeah, I mean, just real briefly to start, I would say, I mean, it's a great question because this is one of the major pieces of work for us right now in the instructional world. After we received the report from AIR, we engaged in the development of an initial draft plan. We presented that plan to community stakeholders, to the Board in 2023. We got requests for revisions, which we made. We've presented that updated version to the Board and the public. It's posted on our website. It's basically the enhancement plan for supporting students with disabilities. It has responses to all 19 of the recommendations from AIR. But as Dr. Reed mentioned, a number of those are multi-year efforts that we're going to have to put in place to be able to actually meet what the spirit of the recommendation is. So for example, we want to make sure that we're exceeding our Virginia Department of Education targets for inclusion. We're not meeting those right now. We've got a long ways to go to do that, so it's going to be a multi-year effort to be able to do that. We want to make sure, for example, that we're supporting our twice-exceptional students in accessing the advanced curriculum that they need to be receiving. That's going to be a multi-year effort to make sure that we're able to do that, because those are going to be some significant changes, not just to our instructional practices, but to our programming as well. So we're continuing to work on that. We are working with a consultant right now primarily around the focus on inclusion and making sure that students are educated in the least restrictive environment. So we're excited about the work. We had a great meeting with Dr. Costin and her team, actually, just earlier today. So we'll be happy to provide the Board with more updates as that work progresses.
I think it would be beneficial, I appreciate that response. I think it would be beneficial, just for transparency, for FCPS to establish a scorecard that's on a website saying, you know, of the 19 recommendations, these have been implemented, or these are the dates by which they will be implemented, and as Mr. Presidio said, you know, update that, you know, every six months or so, just so the public can see, you know, has this been implemented or not? Because to my understanding, all of the recommendations were accepted and endorsed by FCPS. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I also want to ask about a May 2020 program review of the advanced academic programs, especially focused on ensuring equitable access for all students in all schools. You know, in the Mount Vernon district that I represent, we have had issues that, for example, we haven't had equitable access to TJ. But now with the reforms that were made to admissions, we have greater participation. But we also need to make sure for all of our advanced academic programs from elementary all the way through high school, that every student has equal opportunity and equal access. So I was wondering if you could speak to that? Has, have all of those recommendations been accepted? Where are they in terms of implementation?
So, yes, sir. I think we're talking about the Jonathan Plecker Report in 2020, right? I just reviewed that again, actually, as a result of an email we all received. So I think in reviewing that, it's critically important that we have access and opportunity for each and every student that is able to meet those expectations. And I, I know that's something in 2020, you know, that that report certainly shed some light on. So Dr. Presidio, maybe you could provide an update on how that report's been integrated into the work in the Division?
Yeah, we did not receive as many recommendations as we did in the AIR report. Some of the main recommendations, we're looking at our identification process and trying to make sure that that was really as equitable as possible, particularly having opportunities to identify students that might come from linguistically diverse backgrounds, for example, so making sure that we have the right screening instruments. So we did make some adjustments to the screening instruments that we use in the identification process, as well as some procedural changes to that process. So it's quite, it's quite an onerous process, to be honest with you. We screen about 7,000 students per year for advanced academic services. Every student is screened by multiple screeners who have to go through a rigorous inter率 reliability process now. There's an appeal process if a family doesn't like the determination. So those were some of the things that we tightened up with our identification process. We also have been working on access issues, making sure that students have the ability to receive Level Four services at their base school, if they would like to do that. So we're pretty close to having robust local Level Four programs in all of our elementary schools. We've got about five schools that we still need to do some work to make sure that they've got that sequence, grade through, grade three through grade six. There were also some recommendations with respect to secondary work, tightening up consistency of honors classes and having an honors framework that would support, again, consistency across all of our middle schools and high schools that have honors courses. And we did some additional work around identifying talent development, basically looking for students that maybe were not screened into advanced academic services, but were basically showing signs of high aptitude. So we put some enrichment programs in place, our Young Scholars Program, for example, increasing the amount of opportunities for after-school and summer activities for young scholars, as well as fidelity of implementation with staffing of advanced academic resource teachers across all of our schools. So those were some of the responses to the major recommendations.
I believe one of the recommendations was to provide all elementary school teachers with training in advanced academics and identification of students with particular talents. Has that been accomplished?
Yeah, we do have, we do have professional development in that area. Again, the amount of professional development opportunities that we have for staff right now far outweigh the amount of time for staff to be able to complete them. So there's initial training that staff receive, and then there's additional training that staff can receive if they choose to receive it. But again, you know, we don't have a super-high participation rate in some of that optional additional training, but the base-level training exists, yes.
If there's a desire, if there's a recommendation from professional reports to provide that training, has FCPS looked at providing financial incentives or additional time, other measures to encourage teachers to actually complete that optional training, which may be optional from their perspective, but from the benefit to every child to be able to have equitable access to advanced academics? We should consider it mandatory because both from a system perspective and a child's perspective, providing them the opportunity to realize their, their full potential, maybe that shouldn't be optional.
Yeah, I don't know that I gave you the best answer to that. I need to distinguish between the training that, that staff receive to be able to identify signs that a student might need to be screened for advanced academic services. Students are not dependent on a teacher identification for screening, though. A family can refer a student, a student can refer themselves for screening. Our advanced academic resource teachers are trained specifically to look for students in the classes that they provide instruction and coaching in to advocate for students to go through the screening process. So screening does not require a teacher recommendation, but teachers do receive training to identify those behaviors and abilities that students might be exhibiting that would need them to be screened. The additional training that I'm talking about is more training in the types of instructional strategies to really support those learners in their classroom. There's some base-level training for that, but then there's a series of courses that teachers can take to basically earn like a micro-credential in serving advanced academic students, and those are those optional courses that I was talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Dunn bringing up the special ed enhancement plan and the AIR report, because that was actually one of my questions, is that, I'll just start with there. I'm glad to see that the enhancement plan is mentioned in this report, and I know we've had lots of conversations
Yes, ma'am.
... over the last two years on this enhancement plan. So I'm glad to see some of the things that are working. I'm kind of curious, it talks about updating the IEP Progress Report Form in C*stars. I'm still hearing from families regarding the rating scale on the IEP Progress Report, which is one of the recommendations from the AIR report, and I believe one of the things that was in the special ed enhancement plan. So I'm kind of curious if the update still includes that rating scale or not.
That, I don't know the answer to.
Yeah, I think I better double-check that one and get back to you in writing, just to make sure I'm giving you the right answer on that one. I know we've started that. I don't know if it's been completed and is currently in use, or if there's still more work to do on that. So I better double-check on that one for you.
Yeah, I just, I think, that's great. I just, the reason I bring that up is because it's listed here as newly added or updated evidence. And so I would recommend that if something isn't completed, that perhaps it's not evidence of compliance.
Which, which number was that on?
It's on page 13, under Enhancement Plan for Special Education Students with Disabilities. It is bullet 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, "Updating the Progress Report Form."
Got it.
And I would recommend perhaps as next year, once it's updated, but updating, to me, isn't really evidence of compliance, it's evidence of working towards compliance.
Yeah, I just don't know how many have been updated, and I don't see Terry here tonight.
Well, it's one progress for a report form, it's not like updating individual ones, right? Like, it's a form in C*stars that's used for progress reports, that there's a 1 through 5 rating scale, and then teachers can put narratives if they want to, and these progress reports are sent quarterly. And so you wouldn't be like you would update a school at a time, right? It's one form that's used.
No, you're absolutely right. My, my point just is, I know we're working on that, I just don't know if it's live in C*stars or not, so I better just double-check on that one.
I know, I appreciate what you're saying, and I appreciate the double-checking. I'd rather get the, I just don't think, if it's not done, it should be listed as evidence.
Sure, yeah.
And similarly, the inclusive education framework, I recall the last time we talked about that, it was really, we're going to do inclusion by doing inclusion. And so I'm kind of curious what additional guiding principles and implementation, it says implementing an inclusive framework, so has it been implemented? Or where are we in the implementation?
So again, that's an area where we have created documentation and guidance, but that's part of the work that we're going to be doing with Dr. Costin, to really make sure that she's reviewing that and that we've got the right model before we scale, try to scale things up across the Division. But we are piloting new inclusive programming models right now. So for example, at the pre-k level, we've got three different inclusion models that we're piloting in preschool classrooms this year, with the intent to try to figure out which of those models, or if all of those models are going to be scalable across the Division. But obviously, we've got to do the same thing at K-12, and that's a lot of the work that we're going to be doing with Dr. Costin over the remainder of this year.
I appreciate that. I guess what I was trying to say is that inclusive preschool, and I believe that was listed separately here, is great, and I loved it, but it's different than the inclusive education framework and the guiding principles, and so I don't want to conflate the two here. But there were specific guiding principles and a framework that I know was presented as part of the special ed enhancement plan materials. In fact, it was also submitted to VDOE as evidence of inclusion. And so I just want to have more information on what that is, different from what we had talked about a year ago.
So again, we've created documentation around that and updated framework, but again, we, that's work that we want to make sure is the best work that we can do, and we've got the best model possible. So that's work that we're engaging with Dr. Costin in before we scale something up across the Division.
So maybe we should link to that form. Can we go back and link to what we've developed, so we can provide a link to you for that?
That's what I was going to ask. I understand it's, it's ongoing work, of course, but I'd be curious to see what changed, since it's, again, listed as newly added, I'd be curious what changes were made. So that was another question that I had. Same with the progress report, I'd be curious to see what, because that's been a big bone of contention, this rating scale, because it ends up being somewhat difficult to interpret progress. And so I really, if it has been newly added evidence, I'd love to see what the change is. So that's another piece. I'm also, I have to admit, I love the fact that those executive functioning pilots, after 10 years of asking for it, so I'm really thrilled to see that. However, I'm a little concerned at the elementary school that it's only for Tier Two and Tier Three, because a lot of twice-exceptional students may not be receiving Tier Two or Tier Three instruction, they may be receiving Tier One, but developing those executive functioning supports for twice-exceptional and general education students is super-important to ensure that they can maintain that general, the inclusive atmosphere in middle and high school. So I'm concerned that the pilot at elementary school is only Tier Two and Tier Three. Can you just help me understand why, and also, how many schools this pilot is at?
So there were a couple of things we wanted to do with this pilot, right? A couple of things. One, at the middle and high, we wanted to integrate executive functioning into like advisory period for students, they didn't lose an elective. So we have several of those pilots at, I don't know how many, how many middle and highs are we doing? I want to say seven, but I could be off on that.
It's about seven, yeah.
Okay. Seven schools, and I would have to get back to you with the names of those schools. But we did create new guidelines for IEP meetings this year to offer that as an option for families as they plan for next year, because that was one of the big challenges last spring, as we began to work on this pilot, is we'd have to go back and redo IEP meetings. So that's guidance that's being provided right now in IEP meetings, so that we can set next year up for not to be a pilot. So we're trying to be, how do I say? I mean, some of the things are complete and some of the things we're doing this year, but that's a big shift for the system to do that. For the elementary, we picked, this was the name of that unstuck and on target?
So this is unstuck and on target at the elementary, and we've been working with the authors at Children's National around how to use that.
Right.
A number of our schools had been using it previously at elementary, and it really is designed at elementary for Tier Two and Tier Three. So we brought more schools on board with that work to expand that work this year, with the goal of scaling that up to all elementary schools, I think, two years from now is where we would be, so.
My time is up, but I still wanted the number of elementary schools. My time is up, but I still wanted the number of elementary schools. I'll take a go-back.
Thank you, Ms.
I'll get you the exact number, but it's like two dozen.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I didn't realize was that the presentation that is given to us this evening is new evidence, well, updated evidence. And I should have gone and gone back to the last year's report and reviewed the baseline first, and then, and then take a look at the updated. That's, that's my mistake. So this might have been already included, what I'm about to ask you might have been included in your basic report from last year. I don't know exactly when I asked you, this was presented. But I was trying to find under eight, number eight, a instructional programs and practices that meet the unique strengths, backgrounds, and readiness and learning style of each student, and supporting the students in their learning. I think this is something that I think I had shared with you before in a public setting, that, you know, we have many students, many multilingual students in ESOL programs. And our ESOL students, when they come to our school system, they get, they get assessed, and then they are placed at the certain level. My question to you is, whether this goes to you, or Dr. Presidio, or Ms. Clemente, you pick, does the student need to stay in particular level throughout the whole year, throughout the whole semester, or if there are students in the class who may be moving faster than others, or slower than others, is there a different placement they can move into throughout the year?
So, I think that one of the things we're looking at right now with our multilingual students, particularly in the area of math, is providing the continuing content movement, because we've actually, at our multilingual Student Summit, actually heard that we have multilingual students that felt like they were placed in courses that they'd already taken in their home country. And actually, I think, Megan, we heard from several students that felt like, I'd already taken algebra, I'd already taken geometry, but they put me back in it again, right? So we're really working hard to make sure that our multilingual students are placed in the highest level course that they can be coming in, particularly in those content-heavy courses. So I think that's really been a bit of a shift over the last year. And we're also looking at, Dr. Ponce, who's not able to be here this evening, but we're looking at actually alternative language math textbooks in secondary, middle, and high school as well, so students can come in and, as they work on their English language development, not lose ground in content in mathematics. But I think, Dr. Presidio, I don't know if you want to add, kind of, some of our thoughts. We've actually moved into more global training for staff around multilingual learners. I shared this evening, for the first time, we have basal reading materials for multilingual students, which we've never had. This is a new, it's new for Fairfax County. So we're really, like, doubling down on supporting our multilingual students. But do either one of you want to add to that in terms of how we're making sure your students are in a more rigorous course? Because sometimes I think we've, maybe, anyhow, I'll leave it there.
Well, I mean, I think you did, I think you did a really good job of covering that. I guess maybe just the one thing that I would add is that we're also doing a lot of consultations with schools. So when we look at our data and we see that, for example, we might have multilingual learners that aren't making the expected progress that we would like them to make, we have consultations with the schools to look at the student schedules. Our ESOL department is actually even having individual consultations with individual students' families and counselors and administrators at a school. I think they did like 300 of those consultations last year, to try to make sure that students are getting not just placed in, in rigorous classes, but the appropriate support to be successful in those classes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. You know, I understand what you said about the math and other content classes, but I, my main focus right now is on the students, a need to be provided with the right level of instruction, in whichever level the place student is placed in. So, for example, if a student moves fast enough to get out of their level, to move to the next level, to not wait until the end of school year, or next year, following year, to move their student up. That is where, where we have a system already in place to provide that kind of a support to the students, to the multilingual students.
So I think our intent is like a triage, right? As soon as they're ready to be out and doing the next level, we want them out and doing the next level.
I would love to see the data.
Well, we are excited to show it to you. It's in our Goal 1 data, and for the first time in a long time, we have double-digit increases in our multilingual performance. You'll see that in Goal 1.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
It's a big deal. We're excited. Our principals were, we had a lot to celebrate with them this morning.
All right, thank you, thank you. I had another, another question, but I'm going to wait until some other time, because that, my question that has to do with supporting a less commonly taught world language teachers, planning time, does not really fit into your ENI, so I'm going to wait the right time to ask that question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Dixit.
Dr. Reed, thank you for this presentation. I definitely enjoyed talking to some ESOL teachers at my, one of the school visits recently, and they showed me the books and the instruction material, and they were so excited about it. This is the first time ever in FCPS that they had, you know, something to go with. Now, it's a lot to cover.
Right.
So basically, now we have to have enough staff to, to support that curriculum. So I believe some staff, some schools and elementary school have two ESOL teachers, some have one, some have one and a half. How do we do that equitable, because a diversity need is there in pretty much every school, like, we need that support system.
So it's a great question, Ms. Dixit. I think we're really looking at the models that some of our states have used, where part of becoming, part of getting a teaching license requires certification in multilingual learning and teaching strategies. So I know our team is thinking about how we're going to provide, like, a micro-credentialing program. So there, I think the data from Rich Polio last year was that over 80% of our teachers are teaching students who are multilingual. So I think all of our staff benefit when we all have improved skills around instruction for multilingual students. So I think our strategy, while we're trying to hire more teachers to work with multilingual students directly, it's also to make sure that we understand the strategies for effective instructions, GLAD strategies, PSYOP strategies. And I think the more the entire system understands those, the more support our students have across the board, because we're never going to find enough multilingual teachers to satisfy every content area. And we want our students to be able to be, you know, in AutoCAD, Orchestra, Advanced Math, Science, the Arts, et cetera, right? So I think if we all understand those strategies, it's going to improve the experience for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I have one more follow-up question. You mentioned about Title 1 schools have Science Olympiad, Math Olympiad, and I was at, you know, a school, and I said, do you guys have Science Olympiad, Math? And it's not a Title 1 school,
Oh.
but they didn't have it. It was, it was a kind of a sad moment for me to hear that, because I think every elementary school should have those programs.
So a non-Title 1 school. So let me know. We were supposed to making, anyhow, the focus for sure was the 51, is it 51 elementary Title 1 schools? Forty-one. Forty-one Title 1 elementary schools, 50 total with middle and high, right? Our 41 schools had to have that program. So we'll check in on who is not. Most of our non-Titel 1 schools already had Math Olympiad, Science Olympiad, so we'll do a check on that.
All right. I'll, I'll talk to you. And but, but they, they have spelling bee, so I was actually
Okay, spelling bee.
Spelling bee, I think, is in the, in the classroom activity, they, they're doing it, which, again, is a really great way to, fun way to learn spellings. And I, I think that's, again, excuse to be a club, but now I hear that they're doing more in the classroom.
Right.
So, so I, I heard really great, great things about the new, new curriculum. Thank you.
I, I appreciate you mentioning it. I also know that it's a lot of work for our staff, right? Because the lift of learning the new pieces and how they work together, we really appreciate that for teachers who are going to.
Thank you, Ms. Dixit. Ms. St. John Cunningham.
So I don't have a question, but, and this is a very comprehensive report with a lot of information, and I, I want to compliment the staff and the superintendent for the breadth and depth of the programs offered from pre-K through 12th grade, and, you know, some of our C, our career and technical training programs. Based on the previous discussion we were having about education and talking about how our schools might be failing, but when you look at everything we offer, we've had a discussion here on this board from pre-K to special education, multilingual learners, advanced placement, not to mention arts programming and enrichment programs. I really commend that we're concentrating on getting staff to teach all these programs, because a common thread is, like, we need more, we need more of this. And I know that we're coming out of COVID and not having enough staff, and so getting enough staff and the time that it takes to train the staff. There's not enough hours to train the staff for everything, but I want to commend the work that has been done. And if you, I know from being in the schools, the amount of dedication and time teachers put in, and how these programs really make an impact and touch our students. Just this weekend, I was at the White House, and there were three graduates from FCPS that were there, and they had their high school ESOL teacher there. One of the students works at the White House. That's, she graduated from here and works at, at the White House, and brought her ESOL teachers because she was the best mentor that she ever had. And so I know we talk about, a lot about the data, which obviously is critical, but sometimes we miss out on those very personalized connections of how you can have three students that, five years out, are inviting their teacher to come to an event because they value her so much and the impact that they've had. And that's one incident, one instance of many in this county. And so I just want to commend the work, and I want to commend the out-of-the-box thinking with some of this programming, to address the really unique needs that we're seeing. So I know some things are working. I know we're working towards some things, but I'm just proud to be a board member for this school district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Ms. Marin.
Yes, I just have two questions, or two topics. One is, so you reiterated that the plan is for a seven-year cycle for basal renew, and we know that we just renewed the literacy one, which was quite longer than seven years, and that was not on your watch. But are there ways that we can try and build in some protections, like are the contracts for the basal materials tied to seven years, so that some board in the future has to wrestle with that? Or, you know, what can we do to prevent having this delay in the future for any of our basal materials?
Well, I, I think one of the key strategies is an annual review of our instructional program, which we're doing tonight, right? So I think an annual review included where we are on our cycle and what we're doing. So this evening, I shared with you where we are, and I think as years go forward, it's at this annual review of the instructional program that the board would want to review, whether we're staying on track, to be honest with you. And I think when, when you don't have an annual review of where you are, it's sometimes things get lost in the shuffle, because we get busy, we get focused on other things. And at the end of the day, our core mission is educating each and every one of our students, right? Like, that's our core mission.
Well, I think something that could be included in future reviews, at least, you know, while you're, you're at the helm, is to put, like, you know, T minus how many years until the contract expires. This way, future boards are confronted with that in writing. So that's one point. And the other point is around the executive functioning. That's, that's great stuff. It was on slide 14, and there was some talk about AVID and expanding that, but so I'm just wondering a little bit more about how AVID can fulfill that need, since we are investing in that already. Is there much overlap, or is it kind of different? And I know elementary AVID isn't as, you know, prominent as middle and high, so what do you think?
Well, I, I think AVID is a great program for all kids, personally. I think that we've committed to AVID in every Title 1 elementary, again, and that's all 41, with over three years, last year, this year, and next year. By the end of next year, that commitment will be complete. We have AVID in a number of our middle and high schools and secondary schools. I think AVID helps with study skills and personal organization, the WICAR strategies, note-taking, and that type of thing. I do think there's another element that Unstuck and On Target likely provides, that might be even more, which is likely that Tier 2 or Tier 3 support. AVID might be more of a Tier 1 support for executive functioning, if I'm generalizing. But, you know, I, I just think that, I also think that the self-discipline of, like, homework matters, too, right? Like, actually having to take something home and bringing it back, as long as it's not new material, as long as it's just practice material at home. I think that ability to develop the self-discipline, the routines, the habits of effective studenting will carry over into adulthood. So I think those are honestly very important.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. I'll take a turn. So I'm realizing that the new format of the EL reports creates an interesting dichotomy of focusing on the new stuff
Right.
and kind of being like, oh, good, we're still doing the good stuff, right?
Yes, yes.
And the other thing that I've noticed is that there's no, you know, a bullet does not do sufficient work to show the weight of the impact that something has, right? That every bullet looks the same in a document, although any one bullet might be a much more significant lift. Can our members of LT, if you don't mind, Dr. Reed, raise their hand if they've had any role, any role at all, in our transition to literacy based on the science of reading and our adoption of the language arts basal materials? Any role at all. Look at that.
Mm-hmm.
Most everybody. And, you know, even, even the people that didn't, I see a role, like, you know, Mr. Malloy was part of the legislative lobbying. Mr. Solomon is hiring people to do the work. Mr. Foster keeps us making sure that it's legal and that we're servicing students. So everybody has
Right.
a role in this work. And so when I see the progress we're making on rolling out not only the transition, but also the, the basal materials, you know, I remember when Ms. Marin came back to the board, having viewed them, super excited, and now we're seeing that in our staff and in our families. And so as the board begins to appoint people to the social studies basal selection committee, I'm seeing on the horizon another opportunity for excitement in the transition of this instructional program. And you, in passing, you told me we're going to speed up our basal selection for math, which I see is in the report as well.
Yes, sir.
I mean, these are the types of things that will move those numbers that we're after. And I think of what we're already doing, you look at our SOL data, the improvement that we've seen even without the full adoption of new basal materials, we have a lot to look forward to here, so.
Yes, sir. And I, when you look at page 13, when I, when you mentioned bullets, meaning something, this is the first time we've provided school-based administrators advanced courses on instructing twice exceptional learners. Dr. Olamaji indicated that our academy classes, it's the first time we've had our 2E instruction academy classes fill up to the point where she's added a second section. So I, I really believe that our staff, as we recognize the new strategies, or the strategies that are going to enable success for each and every student, they're really, they're diving in. And I'm really proud of the staff for creating the, the space for this new learning and the staff that are taking advantage of it.
All the while, maintaining all of the other things that we're talking about in this EL that were maybe talked about last year, but are just as equally important as they were before. So, you know, I'm going to have to do my job as a board member to remember that the ongoing work is equally important, and to really interrogate whether it's having the desired impact. And I'm very hopeful for what we have in store for us, especially around the selection of these materials, and know that just as everybody at the other dais was involved in the language arts basal selection and implementation, they're going to have similar roles, for the most part, in these other adoptions as well. And those are huge And those are huge lists. I don't know if there's a way to, I'll finish my sentence and then move on, but if there's a way in future reports to indicate the significance of the lift that it took to accomplish something, I think that would be beneficial for the board as well because a little circle on a piece of paper just doesn't do it, so.
Yes, sir. I think our staff would like me to recognize their lift a little more often, so I think, I'm sure that resonates.
I think we all could.
Yep.
All right, we have some go-backs, so we will get started with Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about on page six, where you had some information that spoke to the impact of the Lexia program. This is indicative of what I was looking for, that what I've always been looking for, which is we're doing this thing, what is its impact? So that's very clear. So I would love to see this show up a little bit more frequently with some of the other areas. Being that it's not there, and I know how much of an investment it is, I'm hoping that you can speak to the impact of the high-impact tutoring. How are we measuring that it's having the desired impact?
Sure, yes, ma'am. I thought we had a slide on high-impact tutoring, so let me go back here. Slide seven, maybe? We had, let's see here, we had, as of last May, 10,800 students served and we had the number of students, we now have 169 elementary middle with approximately 550 tutors. And I believe, let's look at the next page. I thought we had some data on kids being able to move to the next grade level successfully, but maybe that was Twilight.
That was related to Twilight.
That was Twilight program. All right, so we will get you some data on the high-impact tutoring, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Having the numbers is a very good start, but knowing what is it that they, how they spent their time and how you evaluating the effectiveness of that time would be very helpful. One of the other things that you talked about here are the instructional rounds, similar thing. That's a fantastic strategy in order to really see what's happening in classrooms. So last year, administrators and central office folks got involved with that. This year, I think it stayed, is stated here that it will be school-based. What was the impact of those administrative instructional rounds? How do we see that being funneled into some of our current actions?
So one of the outcomes of last year's, I think, were the development of the plan to do common assessments this year. So, but I don't know if there are other elements that the impact of the walkthroughs might have had, either Ms. Neal or somebody on the team.
I welcome others because we had many people along this road.
Right.
Who attended school, different schools to, to participate. I think one of the strengths is really just grounding each other in what we're seeing, right? What are you seeing in these classrooms? What am I seeing? What do we really hold up as, as rigorous and, and high-quality instructions? Are the conversations among leadership team members, I think are really important because we all bring our own perspectives and our own experiences together and we come and, you know, Janice was at, at many walkthroughs with me, people bringing different perspectives to the table. And then it was amazing, as we did that, we started to see some commonalities, the things that we all recognized and the things that we all wanted to see. And we wanted to see a little bit more commonality, hence common assessments or learning targets, things that came out in some of the conversations. Definitely wanting to see more student engagement at times and less, less teacher talk, right? Like, I mean, just some common things that we could see and we could really norm ourselves as a leadership team, which makes our work moving forward, you know, more streamlined and, and more on target.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Again, that's the through line that I would like to see embedded in this report because some of these activities are occurring, but it's not obvious. A quick question that I had was regarding the teachers remaining, yet to complete their required training. I think that's outlined on page eight. How many teachers have completed that literacy training and how many left, how many are left?
So I'm going to rely on Ms. Klemenko, but I know that the summer was like a jump start on the training, but my belief is that we did complete training this fall. But Ms. Klemenko?
So with, with such a large population, we have to have multiple avenues to complete this. And we definitely had the largest chunk, almost 4,000 teachers attend a three-day institute. So the next best thing was to capture as many as we could on the teacher work week back. So you can imagine, it was definitely a compressed, exactly what you need just to get started. Those people have also been obviously surrounded by their colleagues who have attended the longer training, so they're getting some job embedded support and also through the reading specialists. We've also pulled them out for a day with substitutes. We are very close to our 6,000. We are not quite there yet. We've also added some training in for our instructional assistants because they're incredibly invaluable in this, in this work. So we continue to offer this training and actually Academic Matters is going to be on this topic too, so we'll see it again. But we also have asynchronous training that's available for teachers who haven't yet had the opportunity or just want to go back and go over it one more time. So we continue to offer both sessions live with benchmark facilitators. Our people are out in classroom supporting and we have the asynchronous. So it's almost an everyday thing to keep supporting teachers and moving forward with this.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm hitting the same point every time. Embed it, embed that in here. Of X number of teachers, we have this left, this much left to go. It gives us a greater sense of how much work is happening. On page nine, you talked about the guidance regarding the daily number of minutes to ensure consistency in elementary schools. Now, is that guidance or is that a mandatory recommendation?
Sorry, I was sidebarring. You saying about instructional minutes?
Yes, on page nine, I think it's.
Yeah.
The second large bullet, where you talked about guidance to have consistent daily number of minutes in classrooms.
So we provide that guidance to them and within each subject area, it's a little bit of a range, not a 30-minute range, but, you know, five to 10-minute ranges. So there's some variation there. We know with the new basal, in order to do it well, that you need a certain amount of time. And we also are pretty tight on the 30 minutes of intervention every day that happens outside that block. There are things that we need to do because they are set by Virginia code as far as PE, but in general, the schools have to work within their parameters to adjust. But we give them guidelines and, and schools, I think, are very grateful to have that assistance and that help.
I know that was.
That was your time, Dr. Anderson.
That was my time.
Thank you. Ms. Seismarheiser?
So I'm not going to take my colleague's time to ask all the questions I may have on this report. I understand that there's a lot of things that are being launched this year, either out of the enhancement plan or not of the enhancement plan. One thing I wanted to mention, when you were mentioning the Title I schools versus not, I think it fell into one of my colleague's comments about Science Olympia.
Correct.
I would really encourage you and your staff to look at the schools that were formerly Title I or now on the bubble from what the Title I percentage changes from a few years ago, because I'd be curious to know the breadth of programming. I believe it was, correct me if I'm going to the numbers wrong, it used to be 40% free and reduced price meals qualify for Title I, now it's 55%. Is that correct? Or there was a change in ratio, if I recall, change of percentage that qualified for Title I. And for two years, I believe the system, this is before your time, funded that extra support to those schools as a sort of transition. But I'd be curious, those schools that were on the bubble, how they're doing with some of these programming, something to look at.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I, I want to go back to executive functioning. There's, there's so many different things, but I want to really dig into this a little bit. It mentions in here under executive functioning SEL. And I want, SEL and executive functioning are not the same thing.
Correct.
Right. And so I don't, I think it's great that we have our social emotional learning. I think there are some really valuable lessons in there, but I don't want to think that that takes the place of executive functioning. The other thing I wanted to mention as you're looking at is some of the grading changes that were announced by the administration in June, I'm hearing anecdotally actually disincentivize the development of executive functioning skills. So I think it's even more important to make sure we have explicitly teaching and practicing and incentivizing those skills. I see you mentioned fine arts in here and that same section, and I just would encourage you to look at the numbers in fine arts, especially after COVID, and look at the numbers of what levels are being offered and what levels are being combined into classes versus being offered individually, to talk about the, the quality of our fine arts programs. And I think that was my buzzer. Okay, well, I will.
That's what that noise is.
I'm sure you're breathing a sigh of relief, that was my buzzer. One sentence and all I'm going to say on the executive functioning pilots, please do not limit it and expand it quickly. ACSD recommended those 10 years ago on Unstuck and On Target specifically. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you. So in the report, it says that FCPS has adopted benchmark advance for the elementary language arts basal resource, which is the science of reading. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So I think that's a huge advance for, for FCPS after the failure of balanced literacy for so many years. We're actually getting back to what works, which is phonics. What concerns me is just some of the anecdotal reports that I and I'm sure my colleagues are receiving from teachers. I'll just redo a couple. I'm feeling extremely stressed with the benchmark. The timeline feels too short and the expectations seem quite high. It's especially challenging for my English, English language students and, or so English learner students, and I feel helpless trying to support them. I also believe the training provided wasn't sufficient. There are also reports I've received saying that it takes just an extraordinary amount of time to prepare just one day of lessons. And teachers who have been teaching for 30 years in the county saying that while, you know, the pendulum swings in different directions in different years, that this is far and away the, the largest burden they've ever had in terms of preparation and, and just time required to prepare just one, one day of class. So, you know, it's the right direction, clearly, to, to move forward with the science of reading. But, you know, we, we did implement quickly. We don't have 100% training yet. And I'm just concerned that the manner of implementation, which, you know, to no one's fault, it's a large workforce, a large system, teachers need more, need more support, maybe need more classroom planning time, maybe need more training and how to plan their lessons so it doesn't take 10 hours to plan 20 to 30 minutes. And, and so just wondering, you know, if I'm hearing these reports, I know you have multiple methods where you meet directly with teachers and staff and principals, and I commend you for, for doing so, maintaining that, you know, you, you cut through the top-down, so you can engage with frontline.
If you want to get to the question?
Yeah, so what is the solution? What is being done to, to help teachers on the front lines?
So it's a great question, Mr. Dunn. I think it's also a good reminder, when you look at the instructional cycle, the planning, the implementing, the assessing, and then the reworking, the number one phase that's going to have the biggest impact on learning is the planning, right? We know that. So I just so appreciate our teachers spending time planning. And I appreciate the board's grace around the early release Mondays, the seven, seven of those we've provided, because I know many of us in the leadership team were out in elementary schools during the planning time and our elementary educators were really using that time, particularly those delivering the literacy lessons. And I do want to say, it does take more time to learn something new. It's not unlike learning to drive a car, right? The first time it takes you kind of, not like, especially if it's a stick shift, but, you know, it takes a while to learn it all, but then after a year or two, you don't think about all those things and you get in the car and you go more quickly, whereas before you're checking your mirrors, your dials and everything, right? So I think that it's going to take a lot more time right now. We're in the first unit, right? We just finished the launch. And as, as the year progresses, I believe that that planning should get shorter and shorter as we become more familiar with the tools. And I think even as teachers are concerned about that, we also recognize that we have to do things differently if we're going to get different results for our, our children. So I, you know, for those teachers watching this evening, just big thank you, big shout out for all the work you're doing with planning. We are adding more retired teachers too, who are coming back to help coach and work in classrooms to support our staff. Our central office team is working hard to provide more supports, but it is hard right now. It is hard right now and I just, I know we all appreciate the effort that folks are going to. And it's still the right work that we need to be doing. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Ms. Klemenko, to the support, supports we're providing?
Yeah, I think we're trying to make sure we provide as much time as possible. I think October 14th is a teacher, is a staff development day. So we could be doing a lot of different things on that day. There's a, a training that everyone's going to do in the morning at each school, but the majority of that day, we didn't plan a lot of things for people to do because we want them to take that rest of that day to do some planning. As, as Dr. Reed said, there is a learning curve, right? There's new resources and when you are trying to teach all the components of literacy, it's not just one lesson and then practice. There's reading, there's writing, there's, there's a comprehension versus the phonics, right? There's, there are a lot of pieces and they need to put it together. I do think that it is laid out and we provided them a lot of structure too, but, you know, this is the first time they're going through. We have the most professional and skilled teachers and they want to ensure that they are prepared and they understand it and they are ready. So I know they are spending a lot of time. Our team is out supporting and listening as well. I think you all probably remember, and Academic Matters is on this topic, so I don't want to get, be too redundant, that we're not just doing the basal. We also have a new screener, which is one-to-one testing for our primary. We have reading plans coming. We have that training from the state. Like the, the teachers are under a great deal of stress right now from all the things happening at one time. I also want to say that we've also receiving a lot of positives, that though people are planning a lot, teachers are finding that the resources are providing them materials that they've never had at their fingertips before, right? And things that really are so comprehensive. There's lots of excitement around the comprehension building where kids are really digging into topics of, that build their background knowledge, science and social studies type topics. So there, there's a lot of positive too. I don't want to pretend that, that it's all perfect. It's not. And the resource isn't perfect. So we're going to work through it, we're going to listen and we're going to support teachers all the way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I call on Ms. Anderson for a motion.
I move that the school board finds that the superintendent is in compliance with executive limitation number nine instructional program. I further move that the school board approve the monitoring report based on the superintendent's reasonable interpretation of executive limitation nine instructional program as outlined in the strategic governance manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel, would you like to speak to your motion, Ms. Anderson?
For two seconds. I didn't talk. The reason I didn't talk is because of my comments are really overarching. And I want us all to be very careful as we move forward for the very fact that Ms. Klemenko just talked about, is that our teachers are under a huge amount of pressure related to instructional programming and they are amazing and it's, it's a lot of work right now. So I think moving forward, we have to make sure that all of the work that's represented here represents real people in a classroom that are doing real work. And hundreds of hours of planning to make sure that our kids are successful. And I want to not lose them in the data and the bullet points. And so I think that it's really important as we move forward in this work in the iterative years, that we keep that in mind, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. McDaniel, would you like to speak to your second?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson?
Just kind of one final question, since I got called on. I know it's not completely related. There wasn't information about writing. Can you speak a little bit in terms of the writing efforts? Because I know that's been an area for us.
It has. There is writing in the basal at elementary, so I don't know that we called that out. I think it's a little bit in the Academic Matters, or did we, probably not, we probably talked mostly about reading. But it is included. Go, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's definitely included. And there, we were just talking today, we had a meeting amongst our team, and the, the students are doing reading, right, in science and social studies type topics, and then they're writing. And with the comments we're hearing from teachers is they're, they're writing so much. They have so much to write about because of the reading they're doing. So there's a real connection between the reading and writing that they're doing as, as, as part of the language arts block.
And I think the language arts block's also providing vocabulary instruction, which is providing support for voice and writing. So I think we'll see perhaps more prolific writing with voice that we may likely be excited about.
Are they shorter pieces or just more extended expository writing? Or is that a question for the next?
I think there's all types of writing throughout the units. But I was just speaking of this first unit where they're doing some reading and then they're responding to those writings with justifications.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Seeing to others, we will vote for the motion that is on the screen. All those in favor? All those in favor, Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself. All those opposed? Ms. Sizemore Heiser. All those abstaining? Dr. Anderson. Will the clerk read the vote?
It's 10-1, sorry, it's 9-1-1, and I will need to note that Ms. Lady is not present.
Thank you. The motion passes. Agenda item 7.01, Policy Review Instructional Program EL 9. The next order of business is policy review for Executive Limitation Nine instructional program. Annually, the board will review each of the 13 executive limitations at the time of the monitoring report as provided to determine if any revisions are needed moving forward. The board may also review any of the executive limitations at any time that a change is needed, at any time. So plenty of time to bring this to colleagues and discuss. At this time, board members may provide comments on Executive Limitation Nine instructional program to determine if any revisions are needed. Dr. Anderson? Your light's still on. At this time, there are no hands, so if there are no further comments or discussion, I will call on Ms. Marin for a motion.
7.01, correct. The, I move that the school board maintains Executive Limitation Nine instructional program as it is currently detailed in the Strategic Governance Manual.
Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Dixitt, would you like to speak to your motion, Ms. Marin?
I really liked the comprehensiveness of this, and I know last time I led a motion to have even more quantitative data, so I look forward to that, but this is really a cool document to have that compiles a lot. I'm excited about it.
Thanks.
So I think the policy is doing what it should do.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. Dixitt, would you like to speak to your second?
I know, no.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion on the screen, Ms. Marin, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. McElveen, Dr. Anderson, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Sizemore Heiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. St. John Cunningham, and myself, with Ms. Lady away from the table, the vote is unanimous. The motion passes. We will now take a short recess while board members complete the form that is at their table or the online version. It is 10:12. We will be back at 10:22. All right. All right. Welcome back. Agenda item 8.01, Academic Matters. I call on Dr. Reed for Academic Matters.
Thank you. This evening, sorry, I'm having a, anyhow, I will talk about the elementary literacy update. The Virginia Literacy Act really is the benchmark training, and I just need to catch my breath a minute. Noel, why don't you take it from here?
Sure. So I think we covered a lot of ground earlier during the executive limitation, but this year, part of the Virginia Literacy Act required us to adopt a high-quality instructional material, and as you remember, last spring, we adopted Benchmark Advance. In preparation for launching Benchmark Advance this fall, we did have benchmark training. I think some of this is some of the data we talked about previously. The Summer Literacy Institute, which was three days, two days with the vendor and one day with our FCPS staff. Then we had, through Great Beginnings, we wanted to catch our new staff right away. So that was 353 teachers we caught that week. We did in-service, we catch up, that was another 1,600 teachers. And then we did the IAs and subs, because we know we have substitutes in our schools, and we want them to be able to keep the learning going. As I mentioned earlier, we continue to offer the in-person support to teachers who do not attend this summer, and there's optional asynchronous training available on demand for either redos or for people who haven't got the training yet, so.
All right. Thank you, Noel. And it really is pretty exciting, quite honestly, because the Literacy Act actually affects every single one of our kindergarten through sixth-grade learners and every adult working in our K through six schools, as well as our three middle schools with our sixth grade and the three middle schools. So we would like to take a moment and share with you a video, which was put together from Chesterbrook Elementary. I think it's our Cheetahs or our Chipmunks. It's Chesterbrook Chipmunks, I think. Anyhow, so let's take it away, Chesterbrook, please. Janet or Dan sit.
J-A-C-K-E-T. And then are we done this full sentence? What are we missing? Good job.
I think our teachers really appreciate the explicit guidance of reading instruction. It's allowed them to work together tightly as a team as we unpack our materials, and it doesn't matter if you're a novice teacher or if you're And it doesn't matter if you're a novice teacher or if you're a brand-new teacher. They really are pulling together and working together for the success of our students.
As we're jumping into Unit 1, what I'm really excited for is the link and the connection between the reading lessons we do that day, the word-study lessons we do that day, and then it finally connects to the writing lessons we're doing at the end of the day. So for me, just having that connection through all, throughout three of those topics is just such a huge massive bonus, right? It just makes the learning easier for these kids.
Catherine?
I remember when we read the book Encounter and we were talking about this. I think Encounter is to like me, to go face-to-face with somebody who you have like, you maybe knew or not know, but you just like came face-to-face and you encountered that person.
I like that you built on that background knowledge of the prior book that we read. And I saw a lot of people did that too, the book that we read.
The kids are really enjoying it, I think, because it is so rigorous. The children feel really challenged, but they also feel really motivated to do it. I think it's fast-paced, but that keeps them interested. So we just finished the launch unit, and my students really enjoyed the constructive conversations. And we talked about how this is not just a reading skill, but this is a skill that we'll take with us in all of our subjects and into life.
It has been a bit overwhelming, but at the same time, we're all starting fresh. We're all starting all over again with this new curriculum. I'm very excited about it. There's a lot of resources that are available to us. I'm very interested in expanding the learning for our students. It's like a Mary Poppins bag. You can reach in, and there is something for everybody. And it's not me trying to make something up or trying to pull something off the Internet to see if it works. There's a lot of variety in the bag, and you can gear, tear it towards each student's needs that they have.
We're incorporating the science of reading into every classroom every single day, starting in kindergarten all the way up to sixth grade.
Our essential question is the question that we get asked in the beginning of the unit. And by the end of the unit, we should be able to answer that question of, "How do we respond to nature?" All right, I'm going to give you about two minutes on my timer. Turn and talk about these questions, go.
I think that the teachers got a really nice preview of what the whole year is going to look like in the launch unit, which kind of overwhelmed them at first. As we started unpacking Unit 1 last week, they realized the launch unit was just an introduction to everything that's coming. And now that we're getting into the actual content units, they have a lot more time to focus on one skill at a time in each area of phonics, comprehension, vocabulary, all that.
The supports I'm primarily providing is definitely making sure they have access to that whole group instruction. They are getting the content, they're getting the lesson. And if we have to provide certain accommodations or modifications, that's very accessible through the program. And then during those built-in small-group lessons, I'm able to provide intervention or reteaching collaborating with my co-teacher. So we are able to, I think, provide access to all learners. So it's really, I think, is that equity that we really strive for in FCPS.
My favorite thing about teaching first grade especially is the reading and seeing their confidence grow. It's great for them to come to school and say, "At home, over the weekend, I was able to read words with magic E or words with diagrams." So that's really great, and that's really heartwarming. And it kind of answers my why of why I teach.
And so that gives you a little snapshot into the classroom for our Chesterbrook Elementary School students. And I think one of the things that our teacher that was teaching our special education class said that really, I really want, as a board, you'd note, is that we're not doing pull-out at the time of the instructional, the lesson, that that's happening at grade level for all students. And that's really something we've been very clear about in the training. And that following that grade-level instruction, there might be enrichment or intervention that's necessary, but everyone's receiving instruction at grade level, and that's really critical. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Ms. Klemenko?
Nope, I think you got it.
Okay, all right. So next slide. This is, comes out of the Virginia Literacy Act Implementation Playbook. And it's just important to remind those who are watching and you as a board that Benchmark Advance is grounded in the science-based reading research and does provide our students access to high-quality materials in every classroom. So as we look at the common topics, this is actually kind of exciting. And I know I've seen a number of you at open, or I guess, back-to-school nights. And very often, this is a slide that families are being shown at back-to-school nights, because it's the same theme across grades. In other words, in Unit 1, the knowledge strand is life science. And so it doesn't matter what grade you're in, that theme of life science kind of cuts across the whole school. So if you have elementary students in multiple grades, you can really talk about life science pretty much 24/7 with your young student. And it's been very exciting, because a couple of the classrooms I've been in in the last couple of weeks, the monarch butterflies have been coming out of their chrysalis. So the teachers are really excited that some of the science topics are really articulating well, I guess, with the reading topics. So lots of excitement about these common topics. And we have some homeschool connections, which we're really excited about. These homeschool connections are student magazines that at the end of each unit go home. So families can explore and talk a little bit about what students have learned. Those are great little cheetah pups, or wouldn't they be cheetah kittens, I guess, in their plants and animal habitats. But it's exciting, I think, for students to have materials to take home and to have families be able to really be in dialogue. And these are things we could, the Take Home Activity Calendar, for example, these are things our young people can do with families long after the unit. So we're very excited about that. The scaffolds and supports, again, English language development is an important part of core instruction. And our multilingual teachers are going to use the curriculum. We talked about that in the Instructional Program Report. Benchmark Express is a comprehensive English language development curriculum, which is aligned to Benchmark Advance. And our multilingual learners will have access to both, the Benchmark Advance as well as the Express. And all students receiving advanced academic services will participate in Benchmark Advance, which also has extensions and extension materials. So over 7,000 students have been enrolled in the state training courses. And it's just, they may have from three to nine modules to complete, which is what we talked about earlier in terms of a heavy lift for our staff. But these are our strategies for moving forward. With implementation, we're going to continue to provide PD, deepen our understanding, and definitely be partnering with families to make sure that any additional needs are met. So that is academic matters this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Ms. Maron?
Yeah, this is so great. And I'm watching it in my own child's school. The only question I had was about the family resources. So I mean, as a parent, waiting until the end of the unit to get the materials is like, "Well, I could have been talking with my kiddo that whole time." So, and I can't say I've heard a lot, like, the back-to-school presentation was great that they did at the school, but I haven't received links or things. So what can we do about that to make sure families know? Or like, where could they read extra books? Like, are they using Myon? Are they using, you know, I don't know.
Right. And I do think we're working on a family resource or academy-type presentation. Ms. Klemenko, do you want to update us on where we are with that, please?
Well, I'll say a couple of things. The series has several parts to it that can support families. One is there's a Take Home Letter, which your school may not be using yet, but it comes in multiple languages that kind of, I think, set the families up for the unit. So we probably need to get some more communication out to people to make sure we're using those. One of the things we're looking at is how do we provide parents some education around how to support their child at home, more than just using the resources? But really, many of our parents may have been products of whole language, right? And not really have learned to read in the way that we're teaching to read. So we're looking at trying to partner with the Family Resource Center to have some more kind of instructional opportunities for parents too. So the gamut from just helping your child with what's coming home to really learning a lot more.
Cool. Well, thanks. I think too, something I've observed is that the families' constituents seem to generally trust our schools. So even if I ask people, like, "What do you think? Do you understand this?" They're like, "Not really, but it seems great." So maybe that too is sort of hindering parents. But again, if they, you know, I don't know, and I don't want to single out anyone's school. But so I just wanted to know more about the, because I remember in the past, there's just been lists of websites and books and things. And the material's so cool and pretty, and I'd really like to see it before they're done with the unit.
That's really good feedback. And maybe we can take that back to the team and see, even if we put that document online, maybe, to share with families or sent like a link to an online ones, and then they bring their real one home. We're really trying to also, in particularly our early grades, minimize screen time around this instruction for reading, because we really want it to be relational task, right? And really excited about those possibilities. But I do think parents might benefit from having that conversation throughout. So we'll take that back as feedback. Thank you, Ms. Maron.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. One of the things that I wanted to make sure that we highlighted, as Ms. Maron brought up earlier regarding the delay in adopting a basal, don't forget, we also had that hiccup where we had to wait for almost two years from the state while they completed their list. So that did not help our efforts here. So I wanted to make sure that that was part of the conversation. One of the things that also Ms. Klemenko mentioned earlier was consistency in learning targets. Can you speak a little bit more about what you meant by that?
So that wasn't specifically in relation to the basal, right? That was just kind of a comment of things that we noticed when we were doing the instructional walkthroughs, that some classrooms had learning targets posted where others had it written in different ways. That was just something that we had noticed. We do support through the basal, like, sort of what the objectives are for every day. So that is, that's part of the basal program is kind of baked in.
Okay, thank you. One of the teachers commented on materials being readily available, that she doesn't have to go look for things on the website, which I think is a great time saver, because the workload issue is real. How else can we potentially help reduce the workload? We know that there's a lot for them to learn. It's year one of a program. They'll get some things on automatic later on. But I'm very curious in terms of how can we assist by taking some things off their plate? And what could that potentially be at this point?
Well, I do think the search for material cycle doesn't need to continue, right? Because materials have been provided, and that does take time to do that. I don't know what we could take off people's plates at this time. Ms. Klemenko, you have some thoughts?
That is the million-dollar question for everybody, right? What can we dig off their plate? I think that what we're trying to do is we're trying to build a lot of capacity within the school, right? So one of the things we're doing is ensuring that our reading specialists are getting even more training and getting more familiar so that they can help with teams, help them smooth the way, and help them sort of get out of the weeds and maybe step back a little bit. Diane Leitzig is in the audience, and she works in our schools almost daily with our principals in our schools. She was telling me a story that, you know, the teachers get into it, and they get, like, they're just so worried about what to do tomorrow, and what's this and what's that. But sometimes a reading specialist or somebody else can say, "Well, let's just step back. What exactly is the skill we're trying to teach today?" And then teachers go, "Oh," you know, brings down. So maybe I can't take things off. I can't provide more training, planning time, which I would love to. But if we can build the capacity of others, the other strategy that we have is called Core Teams, where once a quarter, the principal comes together with a grade-level representative for more PD, more training, more unpacking of the upcoming units. So we're building that familiarity, and that person's going back and being part of the CT that has had some additional support. So we have just multiple layers of trying to create increased familiarity and increased support for teachers.
Thank you. One of, I had the opportunity to see this in action just this week, and I was just really encouraged, and this was at the middle school, the sixth grade at the middle school. I was just so encouraged that there were actually materials for students to write in and engage with in lieu of just going through slide deck after slide deck on the computer. We had a lot of conversation regarding the materials for ELL students, for multilingual students. I would love to see some of that captured in the video, because it's a slightly different experience, and I'd like to lift that up as part of some of our work here. And lastly, and this will be no surprise, I would love to hear a little bit more about the daily allocations for the delivery of this instruction. When we had these conversations before, before, pre-summer, there were recommended, there was a wide range of recommended time. What have we landed on, on being the recommended period for delivery in English-language classrooms?
So as I mentioned earlier, there is a range, and I don't have it memorized, and it did shift and change over, but it's a, I don't remember, but I can definitely put it in the Friday letter tomorrow. So I don't, it's around 100 minutes. It's around 100 minutes, give or take, but there is some variation. At the lower grades, it's a little more, and the upper grades, it's a little less.
And so at the sixth-grade level, the students, I think, are able to do about 80 minutes every other day. I know that we are going to try to capture some of the additional, some of the additional units in the social studies for our sixth grade in the middle. What feedback are teachers giving in terms of how they need to make decisions? Or is that something that centrally is being done for them in terms of reducing how much they cover during the 80-minute period every other day?
Yes, so we are calling the service that we're giving our six in the middle schools our white-glove service. So they are getting more attention probably than any schools, because we are asking them to accommodate and make some tweaks different than everyone else. We need to make sure their training is very specialized. So they've been getting support from Diane, who's in the audience, and also others from our office, where the language arts teachers have been getting very specific support. And we've redone their sort of pacing guide for them to show them how to fit it into their structure, as well as our social studies. Our social studies specialist is working with the social studies teachers and our language arts team to support the social studies. The social studies teachers have not picked up any units yet, because they're later in the year. So it's not like we're all starting at the year. They need to go in a sequence. So far, we have not, the principals have reported, because I have met with them, that it is going well. And they're all trying to figure it out, just like everybody else. But as I said, white-glove service is what our aim is. So if you hear anything other than it's going well, please let me know.
Well, I appreciate the white-glove service, because as you know, those roughly 3,000 students include some of the most needyest students that we have in the division. So that's really important. What I would also ask is, as you are administering the common assessments and whatever other assessments that are being evaluated in the, that are being administered in the area of reading or English Language Arts, I would love to see some analysis of any differences that we see between sixth-grade students and our K6s and sixth-grade students in the middle school.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. St. John Cunningham? I apologize. Mr. Dunn?
I'd like to understand the data that you presented either two weeks or four weeks ago, showing increases in SOL and VAP scores, was very heartening. But when you broke it down by demographic group, you saw that economically disadvantaged students, black students, Hispanic students, English-language learners, were learning at significantly lower rates or succeeding at significantly lower rates than whites and Asians. And I think that's, you know, almost the challenge of our generation, right? That there have been these persistent variations, and they can't be allowed to persist anymore. And part of the solution surely is the science of reading that we're implementing. But I was wondering if there is any plan beyond, you know, what's being provided for everyone? Maybe it's the white-glove service, maybe it's something different. But, you know, there are certain populations that may have more immigrant students that may have not received as much formal education. But, you know, for black students who have been here for hundreds of years, you know, I don't, I don't understand why we haven't cracked the code on bringing up their achievement. So I was wondering, you know, what is FCPS doing? Or what are you considering doing to remedy that achievement gap so that every student at every school receives a world-class education and comes out achieving at comparable levels?
So I think that what's So I think that what's critical is making sure that we have the same level of rigor across all parts of the county. So I think the assessments, the common assessments are going to give us that information very quickly. I also think that one of the things that I talked about was the Express ELD materials. So this is the first time in Fairfax County that we have materials that are compatible to the basal, that are specifically for multilingual learners. So that work will happen in parallel for our students that are multilingual students. We haven't had that before. So that's an intentional strategy to focus on closing gaps for our multilingual students. The common assessments will be, that's an intentional strategy around students who don't have language concerns, because then we're able to, at the end of each unit, provide intervention instead of waiting till the end of the year, which is too late, right? So that more flexible grouping with the common assessments should close gaps. You're going to see in our data that we are actually making progress in our traditionally underperforming student groups, and we have intentional strategies focused on that right now.
Do we have sufficient staffing to provide all the interventions? Because, I mean, we have a fair number of students who are, you know, one or two or even three grade levels below where they should be. And we, we know that already without going through these assessments. And so do we, do you have the resources you need to succeed?
I think if we were fully funded, we would have more resources. I think the half a million dollars a year, or, excuse me, half a billion dollars a year would certainly provide resources that I think would more quickly remedy the situation. But we're just, you know, we believe that the strategies we've put in a place right now, that we will continue to see growth, and by 2030, that we'll have closed these gaps. It would certainly be easier to do that with more resources, for sure.
And, and do you feel that your strategy that you've, that you're leading FCPS to adopt, is it differentiated from other school systems? Or is there a general consensus across the nation now about how to close the achievement gap?
I think what's, I think what we are doing as a team, as we get more aligned, more coherent, and just more disciplined in our focus with the right materials, the right use of time, the right groupings, we're going to close gaps.
Sorry, but i, is that different from what other school districts are doing? Or is there a national consensus? I mean, there seems to be a national consensus about the science of reading, right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So, so is there now a national consensus about how to close these, these achievement gaps that have persisted over decades?
I think there's a body of knowledge around what often is considered the 90-90-90 school research, and that's consistent, disciplined approach to nimble grouping, the multi-tiered systems of support. Those are all accepted practices that do close gaps, no question. I think our challenge is staying disciplined in that approach, and not veering off from that until we have closed the gaps, which is why this year, our goal is still making sure third graders are reading by the end of the third grade, right? That eighth graders minimally are in algebra, and that we have rigorous and academically intense course-taking patterns for high school students. And we haven't met those goals yet. So we're still keeping those goals, right? We're not picking some other goals this year. We're staying the course. And that's what we're going to have to do, is stay disciplined. If we're going to get these, not if, to get these gaps closed, we have to stay disciplined and focused.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Moon?
You know, Dr. Reed, you know, what we do in schools is one thing. But I think the one big component that we may want to work, find the ways to do a better job at, is to work with the families, especially with economically disadvantaged families, multilingual families. Do they have all the information they need, tools and resources to help their children's learning at home? I think that's a very critical component of a child's growth. And I, a lot of times I have to wonder, because I see in my own community, the vast differences between those who have the knowledge, who have the information, versus who don't.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. All right, we will move on to Agenda Item 8.02, Opening of Schools Report for the 2024-25 School Year. I call on Dr. Reed.
Well, hello, everyone. I am thrilled to be sharing this recap of our strong start to the 24-25 School Year. And I know they're bringing up the report, but every single staff member here and all those out in our viewing audience had a role in tonight's report and what we're doing as a school division. So this evening, I'll be sharing who we are and what we do to provide a world-class education here at FCPS. I want to take a look back at our successes and a look forward at what this year is bringing to our students. So we're going to be talking about Ready, Set, Grow. And let's take a look at our first day of school. Well, you know, this is an amazing community, and the kids are still leaping off buses, running into classrooms to read, do math, science, social studies, the arts, and so forth. So much excitement. Anyhow, so much to be proud of. So let me talk about our numbers real quickly. Again, as the ninth largest school division in the nation, we do serve a very diverse student population, which is one of our many strengths. Our enrollment continues to grow. Right now, as the end of the 17th, which was last week, we're at 181,019. And we will continue to grow through October. I don't, you know, at this rate, we're a little, I think, ahead growth-wise from where we were a year ago. So we'll see what happens. We're a lot of, just a lot of excitement about school this year. Now, let's take a look at our demographics. Again, a reminder that our students come from 204 countries, and that is a true statement, right? We did confirm, we have 204 countries or territories, with more than 200 home languages. And when you look at the numbers of our student groups, it's really clear that, you know, we have, again, one of the largest military-connected student populations with, and then almost 30,000 of our students receive some type of special education services. Again, over 38,000 are multilingual learners. And we are now at 63,500 students that are economically disadvantaged, which means one in three students are eligible for free or reduced meals, which has gone up, honestly, over the years. One in five of our students are multilingual, and one in six receive special education services. How exciting that we have the opportunity to support and work with these amazing young people. Our staff, as of this fall, we have 40,040 employees, which include part-time and hourly employees. And we felt it was very important to put our part-time and hourly employees as part of our labor staff, because traditionally, we've only listed our full-time positions. But so many of our staff members are part-time and hourly. We want to make sure we recognize all the staff in the division. So this is our sort of breakdown of staff. And with 40,000 employees, we're clearly one of the larger employees in this area. Our HR team deserves a lot of credit for our hiring, processing, and managing of staff, and we're excited to be as fully staffed as we are. Our families, this is a, our families are vital partners here. And this is the results of our annual family engagement survey. We had more than 26,000 families participate. And we are feeling very positive about, really, our welcoming environment, communication skills, and so forth, and are working hard to continue to grow this data. But again, really excited about the, the work that our school-based staff in particular are doing, because our principals, school-based staff, liaisons, office staff, teachers, IAs, I mean, this is, it's a team effort. So very excited about that. We have a lot of community partners for mentorships and tutoring, workforce development, et cetera. And as we say many times, school can't, schools can't do this work alone, so we very much so appreciate our community partners. As we engage our community, we've had quite a number of opportunities last year and this year. This year on the schedule already are the following meetings that you've had a chance to take a look at. We'll also have a significant amount of community engagement with our boundary planning and our middle school start time finalization. So just quite a few meetings that will be part of our community conversation this year. As we look at the class of 2024, which was our most recent graduating class, we had a 94.6% graduation rate for four years on time. And just honestly, a class that had a lot of achievements. You can see those on the slide here. And we, again, the class of 2024, or the school year 2024, we did see a 9.5% increase in our eighth graders taking Algebra I or higher, and continued to provide increases in a variety of areas. So let me, let's take a look at how we fuel success. And again, our breakfast and lunch options, there's so many new options that we think are healthy, and scratch cooking, as well as a little bit greener in more ways than one. We've served a record number of breakfasts and lunch, and we continue to serve, honestly, 77,000 lunches every day. That's incredible. 28,000 breakfasts. And we do have 16 new options for lunch and breakfast, but just a lot of excitement there. Also want to thank our, just our food and nutrition team for their impact on our attendance last year. I don't know if that's going to be on our slides coming up, but 191 of our schools improved their attendance when it was all said and done, out of 199. So that's incredible. And we want to credit also our food and our nutrition for our increased attendance and engagement. So in terms of on-track for learning, a big shout out and a thank you to our more than 1,400 school bus drivers, attendants, and route supervisors. We are one of the largest school bus fleets in the nation, and we transport nearly 130,000 students every day on over 1,600 buses. And honestly, that's, I remember I shared with you as a team that on our fourth day of school, we only had 2% of our routes running late. And that's with 100,000, over 100,000 daily miles on the road. That's an incredible data point. So just have a real shout out to our team transportation and all the work that they do. Looking at our energy consumption, also just want to recognize that we have 72 Energy Star schools, and we've realized 12 million in savings for FY '23, and a total of nearly 96 million since FY '13. So our facilities team is working really hard to maintain this status, and it's a strong step in our get-to-green goal process. As far as our technology, you can see just the significant data points here. Again, we're moving as quickly as we can through student online registration, and really heard some positive feedback at our Blue Star Family Welcome Breakfast the other morning at West Springfield High School, where we have military families who really appreciate the opportunity to register online, which is new in the last couple of years, and just a variety of features that we're able to provide online that haven't been. So our IT department, a big shout out to IT, this is a lot of work, and continues. And building our future, our capital projects, construction and design teams, infrastructure work, this data is incredible. And just the amount of projects we provided also in a Friday letter recently, I think there were a number of pages of projects. So with eight schools under construction, two are completed on all of the different infrastructure summer projects. It's an incredible amount of work, and a big shout out to all our grounds, facilities, design and construction staff. Their work often goes unseen, but it makes a huge difference for our students. So what's new? We have, Dr. King is going to be sharing more data as we go through the year on our cell phone storage pilot programs. And she's getting quite the, how do I want to say this, quite the group of friends around the Commonwealth who are calling for advice. So Dr. King is becoming kind of the advisor, I think, for many folks around this area on this topic. Early Release Mondays, we've gone through a cycle now for both halves of our elementary team, and really feel like, as we've done that now once, we've learned some things to even improve that experience. But just again, a big thank you for all of those who support that, and especially our principals, teachers, and school-based staff that had to implement this. We're in year two of our plan, and we've added some sports this fall, the boys volleyball, which has been pretty fun to watch, very competitive. Actually, Justice High School's boys, the Wolves, were undefeated until they ran into the Hayfield Hawks. And it was a great game at Falls Church High School the other night. Lots of energy and excitement. We'll be adding girls wrestling, and we'll also have our second year back for winter cheer. And our middle school sports are continuing. Middle school sports have until, our middle school teams in December will make recommendations for the sport to add next year. We've got our basal curriculum we talked about tonight, our Universal Design for Learning Initiative, and our new Family Academy Initiative. So lots of excitement and new things this year. And that's it for our Welcome Back to School Report. Thanks, everyone, for watching, and we'll continue to have a fabulous year.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things. First of all, school bus drivers, are we okay with the number of drivers that we need?
We always need more, but we are managing at the moment, but we certainly could always use more school bus drivers.
How many more do we need? About 100, or?
Probably about 100, I would say, be an accurate statement, Mr. Buick.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Okay, all right. Thank you. Immunization shots for the children who are waiting to be able to come into class. Is there still 12,000 waiting, or?
Well, thank you, Mr. Moon. We've actually, over the last two years, brought the numbers down. We're now lower than 12,000.
Because that was the number you gave to our supervisors about a week ago.
Right. And we've been sending central office staff out, calling families, texting families, emailing families about immunizations. I'm not sure exactly where we're at. Dr. Presidio?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we've got a ways to go, but in July, we had 29,000 students that weren't compliant with immunization requirements. We're down just a little bit over 9,000 as of today. So we've got a ways to go, but we're making really good progress. We're partnering with the Health Department, Safeway, to have clinics that are going to run from October through December to try to help our students.
You know, Dr. Reed, we need to put, we need to put maximum pressure. I'm, I'm so little, you know, characterizing it this way, describing it this way, but we are already what? More than a month into school. And if you have a set of 9,000 kids waiting to get an immunization shots, that is criminal. That is criminal, Dr. Reed. The lastly, that enrollment, what was the enrollment production, the number that we used to? Lastly, that enrollment, what was the enrollment production, the number that we used to come up with this year's budget? Was it around 183,000?
No, the, I would think we projected lower. So Ms. Burden, what did we use for budget projection purposes?
I don't know exactly, but it was near 180,000.
Armon, we generally project lower for budget, just so that we don't, a little bit lower for budget. So I think you're right, it's probably right around 180. And we're right now, I believe, at a little over, closing in at, yeah, to 182.
Was it lower than, that is still lower than end of the year, last year, which was 182,691?
Right, we kept growing last year. Like, it's traditional for us to start lower, and by October, our graphs around enrollment continue to grow, and we have our higher numbers as the year goes on.
Okay, I was just wondering whether these numbers had anything to do with 9,000 kids still waiting to be enrolled through, with the immunization shots?
Well, they're not waiting to be enrolled. Some of them are enrolled, but we do have a number of students waiting to get enrolled due to immunization as well, and a number risking being unenrolled if they don't get their shots. So it is a problem for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. Dunn?
I wanted to ask about cell phones. So in most of the communications, the Friday letters and the reports, we've been talking about the cellphone pilot, but there were two motions on cell phones. And the second motion that was approved by the school board required multiple options to be presented to the school board, including a complete prohibition on cellphone use in, at all school levels by March 1st. And obviously, at the time that those two motions were enacted, I think it was April, that was before VDOE in California and all these things that happened this summer. I just wanted to check in and see, are you on track to still meet that March 1st deadline to develop multiple options to present to the school board?
Yes, sir.
The Family Academy, I think it's so amazing. I'd love to see one of these great videos that your video team does about the Family Academy, but I also wanted to see, how many sites, you know, how accessible is it? How available is it? Is it available, is it in the Mount Vernon district, for example?
So Ms. Hall?
Thank you. We're actually developing the expanded programming for the external-facing programming that's actually in the communities. A lot of it is online right now, there are webinars, but we do have some out in the community, and I can get that list together for you.
That would be great. Do you have a sense of how broad you're going to expand it in terms of how many sites? Or do you have a sense?
We're trying to expand it across our regions. We think that's important to meet the community where they are.
Okay, and how many languages do you intend to offer?
Oh, that's a very good question. I think it depends on the location and the need, but wherever we go, we try to make sure we're offering all of the languages that are requested.
Okay, yeah, I look forward to receiving more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. The family survey, I know you had mentioned at some point how many of our families completed it. Can you refresh my memory?
Yes, ma'am, I believe it was 26,000.
And that's probably one of the highest we've had for a while or ever? What is that break, just to give me some context?
Ms. Hall?
Actually, it was a little lower than anticipated. We did leave it open a little bit longer than usual and trying to get as many responses as possible. And we're going to continue to work on that for our next family engagement, including the timing as it relates to other surveys that are happening at the same time.
And why, what was the target?
What was the target? The target was as many families as possible. This was, there are different types of surveys, I think, and I apologize, I don't have that up in front of me. This was, this is sort of a sampling of our division, and it's, you know, we're never expecting 100%. We're always trying to increase over, year over year, or, I know, I'm sorry.
I know.
But, but we didn't, I can find out what the target was. I don't know if we had a specific number.
So you mentioned it was a little bit lower than anticipated.
Yes.
I was just curious in terms of what you were hoping to have. And do you recall what it was the year before?
It was a little bit more the year before, if I'm not mistaken. I can provide those numbers to you.
Thank you. The Algebra starting point, nice to see that we've had an increase of 9.5. Can you give me a sense of what our starting point was?
Well, I believe we're at 69.5 right now, so it must have been about 60%.
Okay, thank you. And the elevator modernization projects that took place this summer, can we identify which schools? Because that was a big problem at Annandale High School, and I'm hoping that was one of those places.
I know five out of the six from memory. It was Graham Road Community Center, and then we did two at McLean High School and two at Mount Vernon. There was one other one, I don't believe it was at Annandale. But we are continuing to ramp up this. This is the first time we really did a more, bigger modernization program, and so just being reactive and fixing a part when something's out of service, we went ahead and proactively took the summer to go and tackle those six elevators and do a big new parts replacement. And we're going to continue to do that this fiscal year as well.
Well, thank you. I would love for Annandale High School and for Glen Forest to make that list, because they have really old elevators and the parts can't be procured, and so the elevators were out of service for the bulk of the year, which made it difficult for students who had, you know, leg injuries and just couldn't tackle the stairs. I wish we'd had this report and for you to make the statements that you made before Justice High School lost that one game, because they were undefeated, and that was fantastic.
Yes.
And I also want to say to Mr. Sethi that my middle schooler is very excited about the brand-new laptop that they received. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. McDaniel?
I want to say that you, you kind of read my mind when you mentioned military families and the online enrollment, so thank you and your staff for the work that was done on that. I know that was really important to that community. How many, question, on the slide about buses, how, I'm just curious, how many miles do we get out of a diesel bus before we have to shelf it or replace it? Does anybody know that answer?
Mr. Muick, do you know how many? I'm going to say we get a lot, but maybe Mr. Muick has something a little clearer. I've been in divisions where we were, I don't know if church mice are a thing still, but we were that, we were very frugal. And I know we, well, we went well over 200,000 on a diesel engine, but I don't know what we do here. What's our threshold here?
I think a lot was a great answer, and I will, I will find out and get you.
I asked because I, for some reason, I had the number 300,000 sticking in my mind.
That works for me.
And I, it's amazing, because by these numbers, that means that we're replacing a bus every three days, based on the number of miles that this says that we're driving. If you amortize out over the entire bus, but I know we're not doing that, but I think it goes to.
That would be correct, we're not.
I think it goes to show the efficiency of our bus routing system, especially considering the 98% on-time rate. I spoke today at a government class at a high school that was not part of the cellphone pilot program, and I felt kind of trapped, because the teacher introduced me as the guy who put forward the cellphone pilot program.
Oh.
And I, it was like gaggers, like, oh, boy. But from all the feedback that I hear, nothing but, nothing but positive feedback. And lastly, are we getting, I want to bounce off a question that Mr. Moon asked, are we getting cooperation from the county health department on immunizations?
We are really hoping so.
Mr. Moon, please allow the, that was for recognized speaker to speak, superintendent.
Yeah, I, I would say that we desperately need the assistance of our county health department to accomplish the goals of having our students immunized. And I think it's been a challenge, if I must say. And I don't take any pleasure in that, but I know that our staff has just been working like crazy for the last couple of years, because the answer can't just be removing students, because then we deal with attendance issues with the Commonwealth. And frankly, a lot of our students are struggling to get the appointments. It's not an objection to, this, we're talking measles, polio, right, meningitis, meningococcal immunizations, these are things that are important for our children to have. So I do appreciate that we've got a partnership right now with Safeway. They're going to take care of some elementary clinics, and I believe our health department's going to do some onsite school clinics in October at middle and high school. So we're, we are hoping that we're going to be able to accomplish this next month. So I hope to bring you better tidings, but it, we've just, it's been very difficult to, to partner thus far.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Ms. St. John Cunning?
Thank you. I wanted to get a little bit more nuance on the immunization, because in my work, I used to get some clinics together and partner with people. So in terms of our immunizations, where are we seeing the greatest lack of immunization? Because I know when a kindergartner comes in, they have, you know, a preschooler, they have to have all of those. Are we seeing a greater lack of immunization with the kids that have to get those in the fifth grade and then, you know, the older kids, that it's not that routine? Or is it across the board?
It's actually, interestingly, very much so across the board. We looked at, it was our middle and high school numbers, we're actually really high for the meningitis vaccine. Also, new students have to have a physical as well. And right now, it's four to six weeks for an appointment. So you could move here, and if you don't have a primary care physician, or if you require the health department, you literally could miss six weeks of school, not being in school, because you're waiting on a physical. And we do have students still not in school waiting on medical appointments.
Okay, my other question is, are we taking into account, because we do know that after the COVID vaccine, there were people that were reluctant to get? After the COVID situation, some people were reluctant to get vaccinations. And do we know how many people are claiming that they need that exception and don't have that exception? Because these were things that I was seeing when I was in the school system, that were saying, we're not going to get it, we need, and then I was like, well, you need the exception, and they're going to try to get the exception. Do we know any of that?
Most of the families, as we're connecting, are not saying they want an exception. Often, there's a language barrier. Often, there's a lack of transportation to get to the health department. And at times, parents are told, check in with Medicare, but if they don't know how to go find out about Medicare, then they can't check in with Medicare and therefore don't have transportation. So if you don't have transportation, you can't get an appointment, and there might be a language barrier, it's going to be difficult to get your children immunized. So what we're trying to do right now is work through these barriers. And I think Dr. Presidio, Sarese Smalls, Terry Edmonds-Herd, are working really hard on creating plans for families. And so if you're a family out there who's been getting texts, emails, phone calls, talking points, it's because it's a full-court press right now on immunizations.
Okay, I mean, I've dealt with some of this, so I understand. And so are we seeing the greater lack of immunization with our marginalized students in terms of access and language barriers?
Yeah, we definitely are. It's not quite as simple as that, but to generalize, about 50% of the families that have students that are not compliant right now are multilingual families, and about 70% are economically disadvantaged families.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunning. Ms. Dixitt?
Dr. Reed, thank you for this presentation. One of the numbers, I, which is very encouraging to see how 75% of our high school students have completed at least one college equivalent course like AP, IB, DE. I know we could do better in this area, because FCPS does offer a lot of courses, and dual enrollment is not a very, it's not like AP and IB, it is with the community college. And I, I know there's very limited DE classes in a lot of schools' options. And if these students can get more DE classes when they go to college, or they actually have a shorter, like, they can actually skip a whole semester of college, and it is financially also is really good for the families who are, I know, for college fees are going really high. So I wanted to see if we can put more focus on our DE curriculum, which definitely helps with the college credits as well.
So I know there are some requirements for teacher education and certification for dual enrollment. The other thing we're looking at with our academic intensity of our high school course-taking patterns is, are students who are taking dual enrollment, IB or AP, are there different results, like, on the standardized SAT or ACT exams? And is there a pattern there? So I think we're taking a really deep dive, and we'll know a lot more, I think, this spring. And definitely then can move forward with, I think, what, a very clear strategy that's pretty focused later this spring. So stay tuned on that topic for sure.
I think Northern Virginia Community College wants to partner more with us in terms of offering more courses, and I don't know how we could use their teachers with us, and so that we don't cancel classes last minute when we don't have a certified teacher. So that was my one point. The other point I was looking at is one of the slide number six, that, which kind of stuck out to me is when my, the last one, my child enjoys going to school, is 89%. That should be 95. Like, FCPS is great, our schools are great. I mean, how do we make them feel like going to school and?
Well, you know, I, my child enjoys going to school. I, I agree, it ought to be 100%, right? We ought to all bound out of bed, you know, racing into school.
Yeah, he saw the buses.
Right? And either on our buses, looking forward to a good breakfast and ready to go. I, I think that's a great question. So I think 89% is pretty high, and we can get it higher, obviously. So, and I don't know if, you know, which grade levels are more represented in the positive side or not, but we'll take a look at seeing what we can do for next year and see if we can get it above 90.
Thank you. I hope it's not the seniors who took the survey, because they definitely don't want to go.
I know, I was going to say, it depends on what time of the year, if it was seniors, right?
Yeah, one time of the year, yeah. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. I'll take a turn, and I remember from looking at previous surveys, that, not surprisingly, it gets lower the older the kids get. Let's talk about vaccines a little bit. I know that we learned a lot about vaccine hesitancy during COVID. We also learned a lot about the difference between hesitancy and what the underlying reason might be that somebody doesn't have a vaccine. Lots of presumptions about why somebody wouldn't be vaccinated, right? Largely based on privilege, really. And so all of the data shows that, for the most part, people who are unvaccinated, it's about access, 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 whether they are near a place where the, whether it is at a time when they can get to it, you know, before work, after work. During COVID, I partnered with Supervisor Palchek in our community, because we were using Graham Road Community Building to offer COVID vaccinations, and you really had to make it as accessible as possible. So I have a couple of questions. One, you've mentioned texting and emails and making, you know, partnerships with pharmacies and bringing clinics into schools. All of those things are about one thing, right? Like, bringing access to people. I'm interested to know how these numbers of where we are right now compare to previous years. Are we doing better now than we have in the past?
Yes, sir. When I first arrived in the school division, that, many years ago, it was, we were at 27,000 students that were unvaccinated. And we are now at just under nine, I think, so.
Just a little bit over nine as of today.
Just a little bit over.
So that's a big improvement.
It was huge, and I, I do feel like there are times, I'm just going to be as thoughtful as I can in saying this, but really, our number-one charge is making sure our children can leave this division, reading, writing, doing math, science, enjoying the arts and activities. And we're spending a lot of time doing things that we really would expect, hope, wish that our community partners could be more supportive of, because we're spending a ton of staff time right now. Because we're spending a ton of staff time right now that we could be spending supporting folks in the new reading basal on phones and computers and trying to organize clinics and trying to do things that a county, I think like Fairfax County, ought to be able to provide that support for us so we can stay true to the mission that our community expects from us, which is a world-class education.
And so now we're in this position of needing to do as much as humanly possible to make things accessible, especially during this critical time before a decision has to be made about whether students can attend school or not.
Yes, sir.
So we really need to do everything we can with our partners and others to ensure that that access, and the message about access, maybe we could all put it in our newsletters to ensure that everybody has that information from one more touch point. People often talk about, in order for something to make an impact with somebody, they need to hear it from seven different messengers. So there's 12 of us up here. Perhaps we can help be those, those messengers. But it's good to hear that we've significantly improved over the, the last two years since you arrived here, significantly so. It's in the high twenties to being around nine now. So I appreciate the update. And also, would be remiss if I didn't note that the 40,000 employees does not just make us one of the largest employers in Northern Virginia. I believe it makes us one of the top employees in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so that's a good talking point for us when we talk to our friends in Richmond, for sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, some go-bags. Mr. Dunn?
Um, I'd like to ask Ms. Zemansky, because I do appreciate proactive is always one of my favorite words, but the elevator repairs or proactive repairs at Mount Vernon High School didn't work very well. So I could, was wondering if you could advise what happened there exactly?
We're actually still looking into that ourselves. We had our elevator maintenance team and that elevator modernization team work together to figure out what went wrong. We were able to fix and get it back into service. And I just need to get more information on that. But yes, rest assured, we are working towards getting everything back online.
Is there more than one in service right now?
I will need to check on that. I know one is in service right now. I need to verify if the second one is in service.
Okay. And, I mean, it's been almost a month now, I think, that the elevators have been out of commission, and they were just, I mean, did you say they're brand-new elevators or just proactive repairs?
They were, I would say, modernized. They're still the same elevator, but we did a big overhaul and replaced a majority of the parts.
Have you had any other issues like this with elevators that have also been proactively repaired as part of this summer program?
No, this is definitely the outlier of the group. We haven't had issues on the other ones.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Sizemore Heiser?
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak to this, but I wanted to, you kind of alluded to this point I was going to make. I'm surprised you didn't read my notes. But first, I wanted to say, since I was, I did vote against compliance for the executive limitation, I did want to thank staff for all, I mean, this report from the state of the schools really does show the incredible hard work that your leadership team, central office, but especially our building-level staff, our principals, our admins, our teachers, IAs, you know, custodians, all of, you know, lunch folks, bus drivers, all of the folks that, and if I miss anybody, I apologize, that are involved in providing this, I mean, incredible experience. I agree with my colleague, I'd love to see this 100%, but, you know, I think back to my school days, and I'm not sure I could say 89 to 94% of people were this happy with the school. So just kudos to you and your staff for that. I do think, as we talk about, we talked earlier, feels like yesterday, but it was earlier this evening, about J-LARK and our underfunding of schools, and the teacher salaries below the 50-state average and all of these things. And I think it's important, as part of that narrative, to talk about all of the things schools were expected to do now that they weren't expected to do even 10, 20 years ago, right? I mean, we talked about this during COVID significantly, but like setting up and running vaccine clinics is not part of the core mission of schools, but we do it because we want the kids to be able to go to school.
Right.
Right? And if they can't get doctor's appointments or can't get into clinics in the community, we're going to make that happen because we, that's our core. So, you know, the significant amount of family outreach that we're doing is not something that schools traditionally have done. You know, we just kind of assume parents will get their kids to schools, and now we're recognizing and data showing the importance of that for student success. So we're doing it, and it's important that we do it. But I know our principals are spending so much more time making these phone calls and knocking on doors or whatever it takes to get the kids in schools. And then when you have a governor who goes and changes accreditation standards and after the school year starts, which makes it impossible for us to meet, and then we're scrambling, which is staff time, that could go to implementing literacy, that could go to executive functioning programs, that could go to expanding advanced academics and STEAM and AI and all these things we talk about. I think we can't, we have to have that combined together, right? Our community expects schools to do more. We are doing more because we want to get our kids in school. And yet, our teachers are still underpaid, and our staff are working incredibly long hours that don't let them get to, as much as I think they would want to, our core mission of schools. And meanwhile, the support from the state, from the governor, is just to undercut and make it look like all of these people who are working incredibly hard, and you look at these numbers of people who are satisfied with their schools, and they're going to make it look like they failed. And I think that narrative needs to be out there. So I just needed to say that. Thank you. Thank you to the staff for all the hard work behind all of these.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore Heiser. Mr. Dunn, did you? Okay. Ms. St. John Cunning?
So yes, I just wanted to also thank, thank you for including our part-time employees because I know that there are a lot of part-time employees that do full-time work, and they are very valuable to our system. And I think we need to recognize, you know, that's almost close to 30% of our workforce. And I just want to thank you for acknowledging them and putting them in this graph because that represents a huge lift for our schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunning. We will now have a short interlude before the next item on our agenda, which is 8.03, which is titled Superintendent Matters. And as part of Agenda Item 8.03 Superintendent Matters, I will call on Dr. Reed for Superintendent Matters.
Well, thank you, Chairman Frisch. It's my pleasure to share a couple topics. This week is Blue Star Welcome Week, which is really exciting because we have approximately 13,500 military-connected students. And on Monday, I had the chance to swing by West Springfield High School to have breakfast with our students and families, and also reiterated that our commitment over the next two years to become a Purple Star Division, which means 100% of our schools will be Purple Star schools. Currently, we have 69, and we expect to see the rest come on board in the next two years. Want to give a big shout-out to Spring Hill Elementary School, named a 2024 National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. The Blue Ribbon School Program recognizes high-performing schools and schools making exemplary progress towards closing achievement gaps. And Spring Hill was commended as an exemplary high-performing school based on high achievement in reading and math during the 22, 23 school year. Go Panthers! And Principal Amy Briggs for this hard work and achievement. Also want to mention that last night, I attended the Foundation's annual Hall of Fame induction, and it was really an exciting evening event, and it was great to hear from so many incredible alumni from Fairfax County and so many alumni that really credit their adult success to Fairfax County Public Schools and were intentional about bringing their families back to have their children in school. So I think it's fabulous. I think Megan, our student board member, mentions the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. It was great to be a part of that work. And then attended a number of back-to-school nights, the Mount Eagle Elementary School 75th Anniversary. We've done a couple of community conversations, and I've had an opportunity to attend the Fairfax County Council for Economic Opportunity and the County Workforce Readiness Group. So just a lot of, a lot of great work going on around the county. Also visited a number of elementary schools, Vienna Elementary and Colvin Run most recently, and several athletic events. So on that note, I'll turn it back to you, Chairman Frisch.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Agenda Item 9.9, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for the approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided for all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda is on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda Item Number 10, New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. Agenda Item 11, Board Committee Reports. I call on Mr. McElveen for an audit committee report.
Thank you. So we continue to review the audit plan for the year, and we've embarked on some new audits as well. We will be bringing something for board discussion and close meeting shortly. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Agenda Item 12, Board Matters. The next item on the agenda is Board Matters. I will call on each school board member to offer an update. Mr. Dunn?
Well, I, I think we saw tonight that the return to school has been fantastically successful, so I'd like to thank Dr. Reed for her tremendous leadership and long evening of reports this evening. It's been a very active couple of weeks since the last board meeting. I've been working with Region Force Assistant Superintendent Pablo Rosindes to ensure that a teacher through participate learning who wasn't ready to be in the classroom was removed, and we're continuing to work together closely to ensure that we get a highly qualified teacher in, in place quickly. I also worked to support Waynewood Elementary to obtain an additional kindergarten teacher to reduce some of their large class sizes. I'm also currently working closely with Bucknell Elementary, which is, has the lowest enrollment of any similarly-sized elementary school, to explore options for increasing their enrollment to include perhaps the adoption of a magnet program. If any Bucknell parents are watching, we have a meeting on Monday, and there will be a food truck in attendance and childcare provided with Spanish translation so that you can, you know, provide your thoughts on the different options that will be presented. I also had the opportunity to present last night to the Mount Vernon Council of Citizens Associations on different issues, including cell phones and school boundaries. I look forward to engaging more with the community on these important topics. And finally, we have just a lot of exciting things coming up, football games, tailgating, and of course, new sports that Dr. Reed mentioned during her presentation. So I look forward to coming out to some of those games and seeing our great students compete. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. McDaniel?
Dunn, good night.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Dr. Anderson?
Have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. McElveen?
Dr. Anderson was wondering where the tailgate is, because she's very eager to join. Pass.
I like how he's giving your update. Ms. Dixitt?
Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. Ms. Maron?
I just want to wish those who will be observing, like myself, the Jewish New Year that begins on Wednesday evening, the Rosh Hashanah holiday, we say, "Lashonah Tovah", which means have a good year. And I hope that it's a nice holiday, and we can all be in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Ms. St. John Cunning?
So I am really proud of the Franconia District's National Merit Semi-finalists, Edison High School, Nicholas Argueta Vazquez, and Grayson Hopt, Hayfield Secondary School, Mateo Comrac, Thomas Jefferson High School, William Black, and Akila Aladi. I encourage you and all students to stay true to yourself and dream big. I know you will continue to thrive. I also want to wish our 10th and 11th graders all the best on October 9th when they take their PSAT. I appreciate the visits and tours this week at Hayfield Secondary School and Mount Vernon High School. I want to thank Mount Vernon High School for lending me this flag, which I didn't know I was going to be able to use, but I still want to give them a shout-out. It was for Hispanic Heritage Week. If you want to see it, stop by Mount Vernon High School, and you'll see it in their front office. I was happy to join Mount Eagle Elementary School at their 75th anniversary. I then helped kick off the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration at the Higlo Valley Community Center, where the consulates from El Salvador and Mexico were in attendance, and we celebrated Mexican Independence Day with the traditional grito. This past Saturday, I had the privilege to attend the back-to-school event hosted by First Lady Dr. Jill Biden and Secretary of Education Dr. Miguel Cardona with students from Drainsville Elementary and Holmes Middle School. It was great to see two Forestdale teachers in attendance and three Justice High School graduates, one who now works for the White House and who introduced me to Secretary Cardona, and they brought their ESAL teacher, as I mentioned earlier. Last night, I attended the FCPS Alumni Hall of Fame and was inspired by the amazing contributions the inductees have made to our community. I was touched by how each inductee credited the impact that FCPS staff and teachers had on the trajectory of their lives. Aptly, on Blue Star Welcome Week, that one of our inductees was General James R. Clapper, who received his official Annandale High School diploma last night. This morning, I was proud to represent the Franconia District at the Nonpartisan Commonwealth Coffee, hosted by Senators Mark Warren and Tim Kaine in the honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. It was great to connect with my past community school coordinator colleague, Dalia Montesinos. And finally, a shout-out to Micheline Lavier and the family lit class that joined us tonight for the National Hispanic Heritage Proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunning. Up next, we have Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Thank you. I will just say, given the lateness of the hour, just, I'm excited for all the homecoming games coming up and all the musicals and plays coming up. And I'm really excited to hear about what a great start of the school year, the back-to-school nights were great. And beyond that, I'm going to pass the rest of my time and let you all go home early.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Initially, I was going to share three things, but since a lot of my, you know, colleagues have simply said goodnight, let me just point out one thing that I forgot to mention at the last meeting. So this is a belated, belated, a wishes for a happy Chuseok in Korean, or Zhongqiuji Kuile in Chinese. The Harvest Moon Festival is a significant holiday for many families in Fairfax County who are, who have roots going back east, to Southeast Asian countries, including Philippines and Singapore. This holiday is equivalent to American Thanksgiving, and those families celebrate this holiday on September 17th. I'm not mentioning it because it has, festival has my name in it, but, but, but I, but I'm sure that the full moon, the biggest moon, on September 17th brought a lot of happiness to those families. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Anderson?
Have a wonderful night, everybody.
All right. I do have an update, and I know literally every face in the room is looking at me, but I have to because I value my staff aide's hard work on pulling together this update. But I do want to say how much I appreciate our legislative liaisons for the hard work that they put into our trip down to Chesterfield County, where one thing that we didn't really talk about was that in addition to hearing about cellphone policy and other updates about legislation, is we had an opportunity to connect with school board members from all over the Commonwealth and talk to them about J-LARK and other things that are important. So I appreciate the work that went into that and the update that's been provided to the board. Additionally, this weekend, I will be attending and speaking at Voice, which is Virginians' Organized for Interfaith Community Engagement. We'll be talking about fentanyl at their Behavioral Health Assembly. I know the superintendent will be there as well this weekend at Fairfax High School. We had a community meeting for the Dunn-Loring Elementary School Project, which we had about 50 people for and close to 70 questions, really great conversation there. And we'll be returning for another meeting probably sometime in the late fall. The, I just want to, one more reminder that Providence District Supervisor Dalia Palchek and I are hosting a Providence Day and back-to-school celebration on Saturday, October 5th, from 11 to 3 at Marshall High School. Lots of activities for everyone of all ages, awards, music, performances, food trucks, food. It's going to be a lot of fun, so please come. I also want to congratulate the 16 students from Providence District who are National Merit Scholarship final, semifinalists for 2025. Marshall High School's- Marshall High School's Shre Dase, Ethan Stredgak, Yu Zhen Wang, Oakton High School's Christopher Campbell, Bumku Kang, and Lisa Sun, Madison High School's Robert Marty Rosian, Woodson High School's Chloe Choi, Sean Cranford, Elizabeth Doane, and Stephen Labiz. And then TJ High School's Jude Caldwell, Drav, Shonda, Jason Ho, Simasri Cognati, and Julia Zedzki. And then it was exciting to see Oakton High School's football game featured, their homecoming featured on Channel 4 on NBC. Channel 4, for the students watching at home, is a network where they run television programming and your school was live from a chopper. So that was really exciting. And you can probably find it on TikTok or YouTube if you'd like to watch that. And also really exciting shout out to our Falls Church High School coach who was recognized and honored by the Washington Commanders and will receive a $2,000 gift, Coach Coogan. Very exciting. Lots of other updates and happening's happening in Providence District, but literally every eye is upon me in the room and it is not yet midnight. So I am very grateful to say thank you all for making tonight's meeting a success, every single one of you. And this meeting is adjourned at 11:50 PM.